Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August 6, 2013, meeting of the Glendale City Council, being called order at 6:03 PM. We have a roll call for the council.
Council members. Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Sorry?
Najarian.
Did you call my name?
Yes, sir.
I'm here.
Quintero.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. Flags salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Najarian, invocation by Rabbi Samcha Akman. Please stand.
Could you please call for quiet while we salute the flag?
May we have quiet while we salute the flag, please? Thank you. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Almighty God in heaven, I thank you on behalf of all who have gathered here today. Thank you for the many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for their ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for the freedom to embrace you and worship you as we see fit. Thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious nature. We are commanded by Scripture to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities, to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for the assembled council. I am asking that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in the city of Glendale. May God bless our republic and our beloved city of Glendale. Amen.
Amen.
Dave.
Thank you, Rabbi.
Thank you, Rabbi. Thank you, Rabbi. Mazel tov for your son's bar mitzvah.
Thank you. Thank you. I will hear your report.
The agenda for the August 6, 2013, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, August 1, 2013.
Wait, wait up. Okay, I'm going to tell you just one time. Silence in the council chambers. If you continue to make talk, I will have you escorted out. Is that clear to everyone here? We're not used to this talking here. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Cannon.
The agenda for the August 6, 2013, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, August 1, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What's next, please?
Item 3A, I'm sorry, item 3 of presentations and appointments at 3A is the agenda preview for the meetings of August 13, 2013.
Mr. Chau.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, members of the city council. For the August 13th set of meetings, there are no, there is only one item on the Glendale Housing Authority, and that's the approval of minutes. There will be a special meeting in the afternoon of the Glendale City Council, and that's regarding the City of Glendale Urban Art Program. And the evening for the regularly scheduled city council meeting, there's a number of consent items. At 5V is a report regarding the contract for parking siteation processing, delinquent collections, and preferential parking permit program services. There's another report regarding the annual report of the Audit Committee for Fiscal Year ending June 30, 2013, followed by a report regarding the 1314 Americans' Disabilities Act Improvement and Sidewalk Pave and Repair Program. At 5E is Acting Director of Public Works regarding Cal Recycled Beverage Container Recycling Grant Funding Application to obtain funding for a park recycling program and multilingual apartment outreach campaign. At 5F is the Acting General Manager of GWP regarding the Betty Davis Recycled Water Project, followed by the Chief Information Officer regarding the citywide network infrastructure, and finally, a report regarding the renewal of hardware and software support for the city and police departments' Clarion disk arrays. Under adoption of ordinances, at 7A is an ordinance amending chapter 30.26 regarding advertising signage overlay zones and 30.33 regarding signs. 7B is an ordinance amending the zoning map, and at 7D is possible ordinance amending chapter 13.44 related to GWP electric rates and changes. And finally, under hearings, at 8A is Acting Director of Public Works regarding the 2013 Congestion Management Program Cell Certification Process.
Thank you. What's next, please?
At item 3B, appointment of Sharon Wiseman to the Commission on the Status of Women.
Mr. Quintero.
I'm looking for her extensive resume.
Sir, if you'd like the mic.
Okay, I nominate Sharon Wiseman, a longtime activist in the city of Glendale for the Commission on the Status of Women. She's got a bachelor's degree as well as a master's in business administration. Her extensive business background includes working as the Director of Information Technologies at 20th Century Fox, Warner Brothers, Los Angeles Community College District, LA Southwest College. Then, in terms of nonprofits that she serves on, different civic activities, the list is way, way too long to read, but I'll just maybe mention four or five. The Community Police Partnership Advisory Council, the Crescenta Valley Drug and Alcohol Prevention Coalition, Glendale Beautiful, Glendale Burbank League of Women's. We all know her. I think she's going to be a great addition to the Commission on the Status of Women.
Is there a second?
Second.
Scott Scholl? Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Next, please.
At item 4, our city council and our staff comments.
Mr. Najarian.
I got some good news this past week. Good news for me and good news for the city of Glendale, and that is that I have been appointed back to the MetroLink Board of Directors. MetroLink is the five-county commuter rail system with the hub at Union Station. I'm very excited to be back on the board and start to improve the transportation, especially on the rails, for the entire region. And one more bit of good news, actually an announcement, is that I'm looking for a qualified alternate to sit with me on the MetroLink Board. It can be, I believe they, no, they don't have to be an elected official, but I will be accepting applications from anyone that feels they're qualified to sit as an alternate on the MetroLink Board and help make some of those decisions with us. So just contact me. Everyone knows my email. Give me a buzz if you're interested. Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Councilmember Najarian. What are those qualifications?
In the eyes of beholder.
Well, they are in a general sense. There are no strict prerequisites. Familiarity with transportation, particularly rail systems, as well as an understanding of the general transportation issues facing the region.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have one piece. I know Mr. Elliott won't talk about this, but I just received a press release about the city of Glendale's Finance Department has received a certificate of achievement for excellence in preparing the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ending 2012. It's the 18th consecutive year that we have received it. I assume we'll get a plaque or something later.
We got it.
You already got it. Well, I'm talking about it. And also, you received a certificate of excellence for making the annual financial report, called the Popular Annual Financial Report. It's an award demonstrates our commitment to concise accounting, financial responsibility, and transparency and conspiracy. How many times you've been attacked here at the council, it's nice to know that somebody somewhere thinks you're doing a pretty good job. Congratulations to you and your staff. Thank you. What's next, please?
At item 5A through, items 5A through G are consent items. They are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before the motion is proposed.
Okay, and Mr. Chau, you're pulling 5D?
Yes, sir.
And I have a card on item 5C. Somebody move the remainder of the consent calendar.
I'll move the rest of the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Please read 5C under the record.
At item 5C, Director of Finance regarding Utility Users Tax Compliance and Consulting Services. At 5C, one is a motion authorizing execution of an amendment to the agreement with Muni Services LLC for five years in the amount of $350,000, with an option to renew contract for an additional five years.
I have one card. Aram Kazazian, two minutes.
$350,000. That's almost half a million dollars, plus another half a million dollars afterward. That's total, now $350,000, $700,000. We're going to give an option to somebody to do study on the utility users' tax. I mean, for $700,000, we don't have anybody in staff that can do this and save the people of Glendale. $700,000? Thank you.
Thank you. There's no discussion, is there a motion?
I'd like, I'd like that question answered. There's no one on staff. Why do we need a contractor?
Who's answering? Mr. Elliott?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a renewal of a contract we have with Muni Services to provide oversight of all our utility users' taxes. One of our largest revenue sources in the city, they provide the service to countless cities throughout the state. They monitor primarily telecom and cable and all those types of services that provide utility users' tax on our behalf. They'll go in and monitor the revenues to make sure we're getting paid what we're due, and throughout that, also perform specific audits, as well as doing limited lobbying services for oversight of utility users' taxes.
So they're specialists in the field.
Correct. And I don't know of anybody else that provides the service, frankly.
It should be noted, I'm sorry, sir.
And independent from the city workforce.
Correct.
So it's a contract positioned $70,000 a year, as opposed to having somebody on staff who may or may not be making that amount or more. So to the extent that we contract this function out to the private sector, it's so much the better, and it keeps us from having another body on the payroll.
And I'll clarify, this is an entire firm that does this. It's basically a contract audit oversight service. They also contract with Don Meyer, who's probably the leading expert in utility users' tax law, and we get benefit of those services with it built in the contract. So again, I don't know any other options we have, but it's certainly a revenue source we want to oversee and protect.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Okay, we're going to take 9 next. It's short. We'll get it out of the way.
Go into oral communications.
Oh, yeah, we might as well do the three-minute section. I, I don't have any, there's no cards. So skip ahead, we'll do the hearing at 9. Very, very short, I believe.
Yes, sir. Are you ready?
Oh, Mr. Chau, go ahead. Oh, yeah, we did in the record. I'm sorry.
At item 9A is Acting Director of Public Works regarding vacation of the first public alley west of Brand Boulevard and north of Palmer Avenue. Vacation case number 171V. 9A1 is a resolution ordering the vacation. 9A2 is a resolution adopting plan number 12-230.
Mr. Chau.
This is an alleyway that really has no value to us right along the Brand Boulevard of cars. We have the opportunity to vacate it, absolve ourselves of some of those onerous responsibilities for ownership, and provide it to one of our dealers who will then use it to generate revenue. Mr. Galanian, if there's anything you wanted to add to that?
Thank you, Mr. Chau. The only thing that I would add is this is a conditional vacation request. The property owner will need to execute an easement for a new alley before we vacate this property, and they've already done so, but they'll be recorded together.
And we could talk about who it is?
Starford.
Starford will be moving up the street to a bigger, I guess, building a whole new structure there. So they're solid, the car dealers are solidifying their positions in Glendale. It's a great move for Starford.
Well, but in fact, they are going to create an alley. They're going to have a surface.
Open the hearing. I have no cards. I'll close the hearing. There's two resolutions.
I move 9A1 and 2.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Now going back to 8A.
At item 8A, Acting General Manager of GWP regarding proposed ordinance amending chapter 13.44 of the GMC 1995 related to GWP electric rates and charges. At 8A1 is an ordinance for introduction. 8A2, a resolution establishing electric rates for GWP customers. And 8A3, a motion providing direction to staff.
Okay, so, okay, here's the ground rules for this item. As of now, we have 28 cards, two minutes each, roughly an hour. Making one last call for cards. After that, I will not accept any additional cards. There'll be no clapping, no booing, no catcalling. There is, you'll get one warning. After that, I'll have one of our police officers escort you out if you care to continue to violate the rules I've just laid down. Staff make the report, and we'll listen to the public, and then we'll make a decision. So, Mr. Dunn, is there anybody else downstairs? Is there a last chance?
Okay.
Okay, we're up to 30 now. It's a little hour, so we're going to be here two or three hours probably on this item. Okay, Mr. Chau.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We have for you what will hopefully be a relatively brief presentation that get into the public input and council discussion. What you have before you is really the culmination of two years' worth of consideration and outreach to the public. You may recall last year, the idea of a rate plan, multi-year rate plan, to increase electrical rates for GWP was advanced and ultimately dropped. The argument against, in large part, being that the economy was not yet strong enough to allow for a multi-year rate increase, even though base rates had not increased since fiscal year '08. So what we have for you this evening, for your consideration, is the continuation of that dialogue. Now, we have been through a number of community meetings, quite a bit of public input and consideration, discussion, and now we have distilled down for you what we believe is the best, most practical way to shore up GWP. Now, GWP has a long history of being that trusted community utility, but at this point, it has grown out of balance, to the extent that revenue has stagnated over the last several years in the wake of the Great Recession, on top of rate reductions stemming from reductions in the fuel adjustment charge and the middling recovery that we are dealing with in the overall economy. We see that revenue just isn't growing, but at the same time, cost continues to move forward. In the same timeframe, we have continued to do some of the infrastructure work that needs to be done to maintain our system and operate at a loss. Now, we've drawn down reserves that GWP has built up previously, and because we had not increased the rates, the base rates during the Great Recession, we have now the obligation to replenish the reserves, restore the infrastructure program. So what are we asking for tonight is a multi-year rate program to pick up where we had been with respect to rates and revenue growth. We need to make sure that we are investing in the infrastructure, and at this point, given GWP's condition, that means that we need to do that through a bond. The good news is that rates are still very competitive, and GWP still has a great deal of value in terms of its creditworthiness, and so we will be able, we believe, to secure a very cost-effective $60 million infrastructure bond. Knowing, however, that rates are going to continue to go up, and knowing that the council has an aversion to debt finance when it can be avoided, this rate plan also includes the creation of a pay-go system whereby in the years four and five, we are generating the revenue needed to make regular and consistent infrastructure investments to the tune of north of $30 million. As I said, we've drawn down reserves in this period of time, and the time has come to restore those reserves. City council has adopted, as recently as 2006, a reserves policy that dictates that we should have a ongoing reserve of $124 million, and we are not there today. And in fact, even this rate plan does not get us quite back to $124 million. It gets us closer to $114, I believe. The thing to take away from all of this discussion that you'll hear tonight, and what I surely want our residents and customers to understand, is that all of these different priorities are interconnected. When you make an adjustment in what the infrastructure program will be, it has an impact in other areas. And when you have an adjustment in the reserve levels, it has an impact. But at this point, there is no free lunch. There is no easy solution to what the issues of GWP are and have been. One of the things that you'll hear tonight, and certainly we heard, I heard, in the many community meetings that I was a part of and the different discussions, is a frustration on the part of some with respect to the general fund transfer, GFT. We have transferred operating revenues in excess of what they are now on a percentage basis from GWP to the city as its parent corporation since 1941. We have had, for all of that time, developed and cultivated revenue structure for the city of Glendale that really has come to rely on that source of funding. And so it is and has been a constant source of, significant source of funding to the general fund, and that general fund pays for all those government services that folks like to see that are not part of an enterprise operation. If we were, as some folks would advise, simply cut the general fund transfer, it would have an impact on the rate plan that you're going to consider tonight, but it would not eliminate any kind of rate plan. You still would have to increase those rates over time. Moreover, the impact on the general fund would be crippling. The general fund transfer, GFT, is, I believe, the fourth or fifth largest resource for the city's general fund. Now, it represents 12% of our revenue. If we were just going to cut across the board 12%, you'd be looking at 40 police officers, 24 firefighter paramedics, respectively about 16% and 15% of the sworn safety personnel. Why is that? Now, that's not exaggeration.
I'm sorry. Cut.
Cut, eliminate.
Okay.
From our employee. Because 2/3 of the general fund, nearly 2/3, well over 60%, is public safety. In any full-service city, you will find that type of dynamic, that type of ratio. And in terms of value to the ratepayer, value to the taxpayer, stands something that we are quite proud of, is that in our police department, we are one of the safest cities of our size, not only in the state, but also in the nation. Our fire department is a Class 1, fire department is recognized by ISO. We do get value for the investments that are made. But again, 12% across all general fund departments, which include libraries and parks and various elements of all of our administrative functions, HR, finance, management services, and what have you. Now, if you decided that you didn't want to do that with AB 109 realignment and the quick release of prisoners and the desire to make sure that we have good response, outstanding response times from Glendale Fire Department, if you said that we didn't want to somehow impact that and don't touch public safety, well then you'd have to eliminate in its entirety the library department, all branches, including central. You'd have to eliminate and eliminate all of our community services and parks programs, as well as the programs that operate in all their various facilities. So, as well as some of, some mixture of all of our administrative functions. At this point, at the conclusion of the Great Recession, there are no easy trade-offs to make. You've cut $10 million three years ago, $18 million two years ago, $15 million last year from the general fund. You've reduced your payroll from 1,842 employees 18 months ago down to 1,588 full-time employees, which has not been that level since the mid-1990s. Your benefit, or rather, your employee-personnel cost ratio in the general fund is at its lowest level that it's been in a number of years. We're at, we're approaching our target of 75%, and we're about 79, 78.9%. And in terms of management, we are at 18.8% of that ratio being management. The point being that we are extremely streamlined and extremely lean as an organization, especially in one that's a full-service city like this. So what are we talking about tonight? We are requesting a proposed rate plan of 87522. That ties back to system-weighted average rates in 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18. The idea being that we course correct where GWP is in the first three years and are able to get down to more pedestrian level of increases in year four and in year five. What you see in this part of the chart is what the specific customer category rates are. 8.8 for residential, 7 for small commercial, 7.4 for small commercial demand, and then 7.9 for commercial PC1, large commercial users. The, and you see here what the compounded total is. So 87522 obviously doesn't add up to 29, but when you take these numbers on top of one another, it does get you to that 29.1% compounded total. Now, in my meetings with a number of residents through the course of these, this process, this was a source of quite a bit of frustration and consternation. We are residents. Why are we having to pay more than what the commercial sector is paying? And quite frankly, under Prop 26, we need to make sure that what we are charging customers, the state initiative that was passed, Prop 26, we need to charge back to customers the cost that it, that we incurred to provide that level of service. Today, commercial subsidizes residential. Under the law, that is not allowed. Under the law, that we did not pass, mind you, but it is the law that we deal with, we need to have everybody paying the share that gets accrued back to those customer categories. So when we talk about the proposed rate program, we applied a series of tests and metrics to arrive at the formula that we are looking at. We wanted to make sure that we had a conservative debt service ratio that meant that we could actually float that $60 million revenue bond. We wanted to make sure that we had a pay-go program by 2017 so that we wouldn't have to borrow for anything other than very significant singular types of projects going into the future, that we had to be compliant with Prop 26, meaning that we did a cost of service analysis as outlined by the law, and then took a look at what the revenue requirements were for the operation and charged back appropriately to the various customer classes. We wanted to see what the net income would be by 2015, 16, and so on. You can see under 87522, we are at a negative operating income in 2015, which is a market improvement for what we're projecting for this current fiscal year that we have just started, where we adopted a negative $20 million operating loss. In 2016, we finally get back to, get out of the red and are able to right that ship. Again, we look at course correcting in the first three years, and then Again, we look at course correcting in the first three years and then evening out in the last two years. By the end of the program, we're at $13 million in positive operating cash, and we restore the reserve levels to $114.4 million, not the 124 that's contained in the adopted policy. However, it does get us very close back to where we have said that we needed to be. Again, that policy adopted by council, but also can be amended by council. So this is what we look like today. If we were to do absolutely nothing, you can see that we are booking losses here on the operations for GWP, and you can see the cash reserve, and we are dropping down such that out here by 2017, '18, we would need to do something by way of either divestiture or opt-in to some kind of regional type of JPA to provide electrical service to our customers. But in any event, we're effectively out of business as we have come to know it in this period here. The lineup on top represents the $124 million level. If we move forward with the 87522 rate program, you could see the various lines, and I apologize for such a busy slide, but you can see here where we are operating in the negative, where we finally, here's the $20 million loss, the half a million dollar loss, and $6 million, 13.3 that I had mentioned earlier. And you can see what happens to the reserve levels. We're getting back to that 114.4. Now, what does that mean for all of our assorted classes of customers? Well, the incremental change in the first year by applying an 8.8% increase on residential service would take the average 659 kilowatt per month, a single-family home, from an average bill of about $103.15, up $9 so that their bill would be $112.31. When you look at multifamily, from an average of 51 up to 56, a $4.64 increase. For low-income customers, it would be $3.65. And you can see how the impact goes over these period of years. A $9 increase, $8.85, $6.71, 287, 295. Again, you can see that we course correct, and then we even out in those out years. So what does this plan actually achieve for us? Well, it does restore the positive cash flow by 15, '16. It does allow for the sale of revenue bonds to do critical infrastructure tasks in the short term, the first three years of the program, and in doing so, allow GWP the breathing room to establish the pay-go program by 16, '17, where we're putting in $30 million a year into the regular capital replacement and maintenance of the utility. It gets us closer back to the 124 million, 124 million in cash reserve, and indeed it is Prop 26 compliant. Important to point out, this is the first rate increase, as I said, since 2008, since the passage of Prop 26. And so we do need to do the Prop 26 compliance cost of service analysis and ensure that our rates are indeed cost-based. Operational sustainability, it does all of the most critical elements of our infrastructure upgrades for system reliability. It makes sure that our system is efficient and modernized. And I'm not just talking about the smart meters. I'm talking about the actual grid system as it's been developed, laid out, and is being built, such that we can minimize and localize the types of outages and interruptions in service at an unprecedented scale. As you're seeing even now, we can leverage the technology that we have today and improve service going forward. And of course, in California, we need to make sure that environmental regulation is, and in compliance with that regulation, is at the forefront of our policymaking. It is the law. It's something that the council has believed in and adopted policies in favor of, and that comes at this point in time with a price tag, and that is reflected within this plan. This plan is animated by a pro forma that takes into account a various number of assumptions as part of this cost of service analysis. We incorporate our best guess about what the load will be, the electric load will be, in the first, in all of the five years. We take our best estimations of what we think the fuel costs will be, of the cost of environmental compliance of procuring and securing renewable energy sources, and dial that all into the pro forma that we use to craft what the rates are. Now, did we look at other options? Absolutely, we did. And to the extent that GWP is out of balance today, a shorter-term type of increase would basically mean that it's a shock to the system. We'd be looking at 11% and 12% increases in a shorter amount of time. Now, some may argue that's, if that's the bitter medicine that needs to be taken to right the ship, then so be it. However, what we learned going through this process last year is that folks wanted to try as best we could to temper what the impact of the rates would be, and if that meant stretching it out instead of three years, out to five years, then so be it. And stretching this plan out to five years, we go from double-digit increases in the first couple of years down to the 7, 8, or the 87522. We know we have regulatory expenses that we have to comply with. We know that we need to get back into positive net income sooner than not. And as I said, council has been adamant that we have a cash-and-carry program for capital replacement. Bonding and debt service is fine for those once-in-a-lifetime, singular kinds of projects, but as, you don't want to be in a position of having, by necessity, to do your infrastructure replacement that way. Next question that we continue to get from folks is, okay, well, how did we get to this point in time? Well, retail revenues as part of the recession, when they peaked, when the bubble, just before the bubble burst, in '08, '09, and we dropped off quite drastically in that time. In '09, '10, we saw a gradual flattening out that was accelerated because the city actually reduced the rates vis-à-vis the fuel adjustment charges, we'll show you that in a second, during this period of time. So not only did the economy and the weather and the loss of retail tenants have an impact on our revenues, we actually reduced the rate. And again, that accelerated what that negative was in terms of revenue growth. When we talk about the sustained infrastructure program, up until about 18 months ago, we were continuing to do the infrastructure work that needed to be done, such that we were exhausting the reserves on hand. Over the last 18 months, we have zeroed out the capital budget to those things that only had to be done for life safety and regulatory compliance. Everything else with respect to service delivery and reliability, unless it was reimbursed by the customer, we held off on. So we know also that we have very significant costs that we are having to comply with with respect to regulations from the state of California, making sure that our RPS, the renewable portfolio standard, is in compliance, that we are making good progress towards the goal of having a third of our energy come from renewable sources in the very near future. But we also know that on the horizon, there are additional regulatory mandates to comply with. We know that GWP will very well be dealing with a push to go even greener from the state, and that if we are going to repower Grayson Power Plant sometime in the future, that there could very well be additional costs for compliance from both regional and state agencies. We don't know that, whether or not these charges that you see here, whether or not those charges would be included, thus they are not part of our pro forma. These costs for regulation, for regulatory compliance are indeed included in the pro forma. We know those are coming. We programmed that into the proposed 87522, such that what you have today, where we have not increased the base rates since '08, all of the new requirements that were layered on since that time have contributed to the ongoing increased cost of GWP that have thrown us out of balance. We need to make sure that we're aware of what is on the horizon, and we can adjust up or down pending on what the impact is. As I mentioned earlier, base rates increased dramatically in fiscal year 2007, and more pedestrian, 5.1, still significant, but not as significant here in '08. It doesn't take a history professor to tell you what happened during this period of time from '09 to '13. The council, very steadfast, did not want to add to the economic burden of customers, be they commercial or residential, and as a result, we had no base rate increases here. In 2014, we're asking for 8% and 7, 5, 2, and 2. Now, folks say, but my bill went up during that period of time. I know my bill went up, and indeed it did. In '08, there's a fuel adjustment charge that allows the city to recoup, as a pass-through payment, not accruing to our bottom line, but as a pass-through payment, increases in the cost of fuel, above and beyond what our pro forma out here had stipulated. So we did increase by 8% in '07, '08, 6.7% in '09, but what happened, for the cynics that would say, well, once something goes up, it never comes down, I beg to differ because in reality, what you saw here in Glendale was that the fuel adjustment charge ratcheted down 5.39, then 8%, then another 2% out over here, and then nothing in fiscal year '13. The net result is that rates actually had gone down by half of 1% for energy. To my thinking, that is absolutely unprecedented, given the pressures of the marketplace. When I first started driving a car, I think gasoline was 75 to 80 cents a gallon. It's about $4 a gallon now here in California. The point being that energy is something that you can count on to rise, just as the sun does. But fighting the good fight, both as a city and as a utility, council was adamant that we make sure we are absolutely as lean as possible. I talked about the overall city organization and GWP being just one department in that organization, but let's talk just very briefly about what happened with GWP in terms of containing costs. Significant staff reductions to the tune of, I believe, 20% to 25%, 84 full-time positions. We halved the top management of the department. We imposed a contract, or not a contract, I'm sorry, this is a misnomer, terms of employment imposition. We did not impose a contract on IBW, but we did impose terms of employment on them by way of the unilateral implementation that took place just earlier this spring, something that was unprecedented in this part of, in this part of the state, let alone this part of the county. But the council had the fortitude to do that. We also consolidated GWP, which famously had been a separate, had growingly, increasingly seen itself as a separate entity, its own fleet, its own warehouse, many of its own facilities, especially off-campus from here at the Civic Center. We have reversed that and brought all of our folks on campus. We have consolidated a number of operations with Public Works, and in the process have become much more efficient. The general fund transfer, some folks may discount it, and I would beg to differ, to the extent that over the last two budget cycles, you have reduced the general fund transfer by half a million dollars. That is something that is hugely important, especially when you consider what the trajectory is for the city council and the budget you just adopted and the five-year financial forecast that you anointed. We continue to show that we will drop this number down with a target of getting to about 9% of operating revenues from GWP. Now, keep in mind, GWP operating revenues, we transfer today about 9.6 overall. It's about 12.2 on the electric side, but I reference that it's 9.6 overall because we do not transfer water revenues. A number of our competing utilities still do that. So on a level playing field, apples to apples, we've already made great progress in this area, but still, the council has mandated that rather than simply allow additional $500,000 accrue back to the general fund, we would reduce that amount in the last budget year and in this current budget year, with the idea being that that will continue and drive that percentage down as a percentage of operating revenues down to 9%. As I mentioned earlier, we zeroed out the capital program, adding back just those items that are safety-related or are strategic with respect to maintaining critical infrastructure. You don't want to pay to repair something twice. We've cross-trained our employees as best we can, and we've relied on the modernization benefits to work quite a bit smarter with respect to dealing with outages and system failures. In terms of looking around at what else is going on in our region, LADWP approved in '12, a 4.5% increase, and for this current fiscal year, a 5.8% increase. Pasadena just got done with a five-year rate plan. As of '12, they approved a 2.3% increase and a 1.0% increase for the coming year. Burbank is looking at a 1.8% increase, and Edison just was approved for 2013 for 7.7% rate increase. I show that because you need to be aware of the context of what is happening out in the market. Even with everything that you've seen, going back to fiscal year '07, and looking at the first year of the proposed rate plan at 8%, you see that our, the cumulative increase from '06 is 12.5% compared to folks that have, for better or for worse, probably wisely, have done rather small, somewhat pedestrian increases, 7% sticks out, but 3%, 1.8%. They're at, Burbank's at 17 over that period of time. LADWP was very, very low. They've had to catch up as well and represented by 52%. Pasadena looking at 31% over that period of time. The point is that we have continued to deliver great value to our customers. What does this rate plan actually generate for the utility? Well, the revenue need that goes into the baseline of our cost of service analysis is about $165 million. We need to replenish the reserve back on top of what's there now, the 47, I believe, million dollars. $62.6 million would be dedicated there. The pay-go capital, as I mentioned, well north of $30 million, almost $40 million on a going-forward basis to ensure that, to ensure against having to issue bonds out into the future for, again, more fundamental, basic types of infrastructure replacement. Debt service, prepaid energy, and this would be the Shoal Canyon landfill. We had prepaid it in the past. That contract is coming due, so we will have to prepay it again for the natural gas that comes from the landfill that we use to power the plant, the issuance of the bond, and then reduction in wholesale revenue, meaning that we are, we are getting back to basics in terms of the type of revenue we generate from our wholesale operation. We've reduced this dramatically from a rather aggressive $14 million to, or from what it was before, reducing it by 14 million. The idea is that we're getting back to those basics. So what does this plan actually look like? Well, in order to understand that, I want to make sure that you understand the different customer classes and understand that Prop 26 mandates that we have to have a cost-based system and that it is providing for funding of the full revenue requirement of the utility. So we need to know what it is that it takes to operate the utility, and then, once we understand what the cost to operate the utility is, then we need to have the opportunity to charge back to residents and commercial customers alike, the cost for providing that level of service based on the revenue requirement. So what this rate plan does is achieve compliance with Prop 26. As I mentioned earlier, currently, commercial is subsidizing residential. What you see here is that residential revenue will be, will cut 35.2%, will mirror the 35.9% in terms of what it costs to provide that level of service. 35.2% of the revenue will come from residents because 35.9% of the cost is generated by the cost of serving those residents, and you see that relationship throughout. The Prop 26 guidelines allow for some mild variation in these numbers, but the idea of playing fast and loose with that law is not something that is responsible, nor is it appealing to us as we recommend policy to you. So again, 87522, here are the compounded increases that you've heard about, compounded increase, 26.3 system-wide. This very quickly tells you, shows you, recaps what we look like graphically. Here's the operating income going positive. Here is the establishment of the pay-go. Here is our debt service on the dotted line. The solid line here is what happens to our reserve levels as they increase dramatically, and then very notably, they taper off. Again, the last two years, we even out. So this curve then becomes very flat as it mirrors the $124 million target. So as we say, 87522, the plan specifically is designed to continue a series of very manageable, very pedestrian, as I would characterize them, not fast-moving, very significant increases like what you see out the front end. We basically are catching up for those five years of no rate increases. Again, we are able to get debt service coverage. We established the pay-go. We're Prop 26 compliant, and you can see that the difference between this scenario and scenarios that were discussed by the GWP Commission, simply that we get to where we need to be sooner. This, again, is the five-year rate plan, and kind of shows what the impact is on the different customer classes. $9 a month to the average single-family home in the first year, followed by $8.85, followed by 6.71, 287, 295. The Commission was very conscientious. Again, we've been doing this now for about two years. The aborted first attempt last year, and now this attempt as we move forward to this hearing. The Commission, having that background, wanted to look at alternative scenarios. Knowing that 87522 was something that was objectionable to some in those first two years, could we, within the bounds of the cost of service analysis, drop the first two years by a percent each, in each year respectively, and make it up on the back ends? Thus, instead of 87522, it becomes 76533. The short answer is effectively yes. You see not a whole lot of change with respect to the compounded total. We're still at 28.9 versus 29, I think it was, .1. And the system-weighted average. We're still at 28.9 versus 29, I think it was, .1, and the system weighted average is about the same. You can see that we meet many of the same tests here, the debt service, the capital investment, Prop 26 compliance because it still mirrors what is contained within the COSA, but we, it takes us another year to get to the point where we don't have net operating, a loss in net operations, and we are at $104.6 million versus $114. By the same token, you can see what the impact is here. Instead of $9, and I think it was 18 cents, you're at $7.84. A difference to be sure, but when you look at the difference in the broader perspective, the change is not so great that the loss of time or the expense of time is, at least in our recommendation of staff, worth the drop in the percentage, but certainly it's the council's prerogative. And you can see what the incremental changes are year over year in these columns here. We also looked at 76544. That actually generates a higher compounded total, 31.4, higher system average rates because in those last couple of years, rather than evening out down to 2% increases, after we do much of the course correction here, it would be as though we're taking advantage of that course correction by having 4% annualized increases. That generates a considerable amount of cash for us going forward, but still is probably outside the bounds of what was trying to be achieved by the Commission. As you can see, it meets all those tests and still generates, it gets $110 million by the end of the rate plan. The impact, again, very similar, as you see the 765, but the notable difference is out here in the out-years, $5.36, $5.59, whereas $4.11, $4.25, $2.87, $2.95. Alternative three that was brought up by the Commission, ultimately, we provided some level of review, but as it was determined that it was not compliant with Prop 26 under the COSA, we did not go any further with it. As I said, if we were looking at a three-year rate plan versus a five-year rate plan, these first two years would have to be significantly higher, and I don't think that was within the spirit of what was being, what was trying to be achieved by the Commission. Thus, we are still recommending the 87522 plans, tempered over five years, takes into account the economy and trying to balance out the impact over a broader period of time, accelerates the return to positive net income, provides the more than $30 million for pay-go and those out-years, and it does all the other things that we want it to do with respect to the debt service, the bond issue, and ensuring system reliability for the long term. Regulatory compliance is something that I think ultimately gets left out from a lot of these discussions, to the extent that we operate in the state of California, the laws of the state of California with respect to greenhouse gases, with respect to making sure that we have our renewable portfolio meeting the requirements of the state, that has cost, and we can't ignore that cost or we won't be in business for very long. And again, trying to make sure that, at the end of the day, this all has to be, has to be put into a cost of service analysis that is compliant with Prop 26. When folks get upset about the increase, what I found over the meetings that I had and discussions that I had with folks, it wasn't so much that the rates were increasing because people expect energy rates to increase, it was the amount of the increase at the front-end. And so, I think to the extent that we were able to help folks understand and take a broader perspective, step back from what the rhetoric was and take a look comparatively at the value, because I think people, they want value as much as they want to make sure that they're not, the frustration that they have over the amount that they pay, they want to ensure that they're getting value for that dollar. When you look at what the system averages are today, 14.1, 14.1 cents kilowatt hour, we are today among the very lowest, certainly in, among our competitors, and even with the first year's increase, this 1.1% increase taking us to a system average rate of 15.2 cents per kilowatt hour, we're right smack dab near the middle there in terms of average rates, but when you look at what it means to our residents, today, what you see here is this amount, the 67.86 is today's rate. The 6.15 is what the impact is at 500 kilowatt hour. This is, we use 500 because that is an industry benchmark, as opposed to the 6.59, which is our actual average for single-family homes. The point being that we are at this level today among all of our competitors. That is awfully compelling when you consider the level of service, the reliability of service that we've had, and the fact that we, it's no surprise though because we haven't had that base rate increase over that five-year period. But again, even with the first-year increase of 8%, we're still the lowest on that monthly residential service excluding PBC and taxes, the public benefit charge and taxes. So, what does that mean in terms of the average? What's the real average? Our real average for residents is 659 kilowatt hours for the ordinary, single-family home. Well, this shows you what folks have paid over the last six, seven years. When we're talking about $112.31 per month, you can see folks were paying more than that back in '08, '09. So, it isn't so much that people object to actually paying it because they used to pay it. Again, it's the increase from one year to the next, but considering that we've had this period of time where there was no base rate increase, and in fact, these years where we decreased the rate from 10, 11, and 11, 12, there has to be that reckoning that takes place. Now, what this slide shows you is what the rate would be if you went with the 7% scenario in that first year. $110, almost $111, and you can see at the recommended 8% scenario, you're at $112. It's a difference of about $1.31 a month. Again, a marginal increase, it is an increase, there's no two ways about it, no doubt about it, but it's a marginal enough increase that getting GWP's ship straightened on course is, it makes, in our opinion, more sense to go with the 87522. Similarly, when you look at the average multifamily bill and folks paying under the new plan in this first year, 56.14, well, they were paying 58 in '08, '09. When you look, again, at this being the increase, these are the actual increases based on the average uses for these different classes of residential customers. It is an increase, but again, there is still value there. When you look at small businesses, kind of a similar story. You can see here at 2.84, add the first year's increase, we're at 3.05 with the benchmark of 2,000 kilowatt hour. You can see we're just below what the average cost is in the region. When you look at what it means in real time, the average, the true average monthly bill for a small business is 1,500 kilowatt hours at $261, they're barely above what they were paying in '07, '08. When you look at the large users, 100,000 kilowatt hours, you can see here, GWP, even with the increase, even with the increase at 8%, that first year, you are right in the middle of the pack, behind Burbank, well behind Riverside Anaheim, and just above Pasadena. When you look at what the large business is, the 100,000 kilowatt hour, folks would be paying under the proposed plan, 14,222 a month, they were paying a little bit more than that back in '07, '08 again. Part of this opportunity for the rate plan also allows us to restructure what the rate is. So, we are looking at including three adjustment charges. Now, we talked a little bit about the fuel adjustment charge, and we're re-characterizing that as an energy cost adjustment charge that deals with all of our different types of energy now that we've entered this brave new world of renewables, but we're also adding a regulatory adjustment charge and a decoupling charge. Basically, what we're talking about here is the cost of new environmental regulation above that which we know today. So, if we adopt a rate plan in the next meeting, if that does come to pass, we know what the world is like and we know what we are projecting. We can reasonably, reliably project over the next five years. Anything on top of that could be, and I say could be, covered by an adjustment charge that is made to recoup those costs. Similarly, the decoupling charge speaks to variations and fluctuations in the demand, the load demand for electric service. So, in our pro forma, we are very conservative, but still realistic in terms of what we expect the load to be over the next five years. If we are horribly wrong, if the, God forbid, the economy tanks yet again in such a serious and significant way, the ability for GWP to at least recoup the cost to maintain all of the fixed assets, and our costs largely are fixed, would be through this decoupling charge. Now, I say maybe, because if we are in a position through the restoration of our reserves to not pass along these adjustments, the council is within its rights to say, "No, you know what, GWP? Let's not pass along this adjustment charge for a new regulation that adds cost because we're moving away from coal at an accelerated pace. We have the reserves, we want you to take it out of reserve, or we want you to make other cuts within the department." The cuts part is much more difficult or much easier said than done, considering all the cuts that have already been made, but certainly you as the policymakers have that ability. Same thing with the decoupling charge, and it's important to know that these, the energy adjustment charge has a cap on the upside. We can only adjust it upwards by, I believe, half a cent a year, but there is no reduction on the downside. Now, cynical folks out there may say, "Well, you're never going to reduce that energy adjustment charge." And again, I'd have to point you back to very recent history and show that three of the last four years did see a reduction in the fuel adjustment charge. This council has lived those reductions. By the same token, there are no caps on the regulatory or on the decoupling, but it is important to note that that decoupling does, that door swings both ways. If our pro forma is wrong in the sense of we are in an economic boom and we are selling lots and lots of retail electricity, we will have, the council will have the ability to actually reduce rates because we're making that money up on the volume. On the environmental side, no one really knows what the state may do. I think it's been well documented that the state really doesn't care about what happens to its cities, and so, we need to be able to keep the, at least have the opportunity to keep the utility whole over the long term. Today, our rate looks like this. There's a customer charge, there's an energy charge, there is a fuel adjustment charge that has been at this level that was built into the pro forma back in '07, '08. As I mentioned, this fuel adjustment charge went up, and then it came back down to this level. There's also the public benefits charge, which is kind of a surcharge that's been grandfathered in under Prop 26 and is rather standalone. It cannot be increased, the public benefit charge, without a vote of the people, and what it pays for is the low-income discount program, it pays for the incentive programs for solar, and a lot of the other types of incentives that GWP provides. What we are looking to do is eliminate this fuel adjustment charge and just migrate over to an energy charge. This number, this fuel adjustment, has been part of the pro forma for so long, going back to the last time, prior to the last time we increased base rates, that we are just programming it, we're recommending to program it into the energy charge, set the new energy cost adjustment charge down to zero, the environmental regulation down to zero, the decoupling down to zero. Again, because in the pro forma, we have programmed in increases and variations for the load, we've programmed in known costs for regulation compliance, and we've programmed in what we expect the cost of natural gas and other energy sources to be. Let's talk a bit about low-income discounts because the Commission spent a lot of time about this, and I know the council has asked many, many questions of our staff about what is happening or what would happen with the Glendale Care Program. Today, we provide a flat $10 fee to low-income residents, 12,000 of them, I believe, are enrolled in the program. The low income at 250 kilowatt hour per month being the average usage for a low-income household, bless you, is about 39, about $40 a month. So, at the end of the day, we basically are providing a discount of about 25%, so the net bill is about $30. What you see going forward is that if we held it at $10 per month, the net increase gets passed through to the low-income customer such that $29.94 as a net bill becomes $33.59, $37.17, and so on and so forth. Based on feedback that we got first at the Commission, and then, we wanted to make sure that we presented it, at least a full disclosure to the city council, was this notion of what if we absolved the low-income customers entirely from any portion of the rate increase? That is to say, what if we increased the flat $10 a month, or the $10 a month credit by the amount that the rate was increasing? So, you see here, $29.94 stays, $29.94 throughout the term of the entire rate plan, and you can see what happens to the low-income discount, jumps to $13.65, ultimately tops out at $22.23. The problem that we have here is that there's about $1.4 million in fund balance in the PBC fund. Again, it's a standalone, separate charge. If we were ever going to increase it, it would require a vote of the people. If you were to follow through on this plan, the keep whole option, as it was termed, basically, you eat up all of that fund balance and run into the red by $2 million, which we really cannot do. It's a five-year loss of about $3.4 million. You know, we, could we do it? As I just said, you know, you can't do it. Well, you can do just about anything. The problem, the trade-offs such as it is, is that you would be sacrificing the solar incentive program, the energy efficiency program, and in fact, still run probably into the negative. By way of looking at the surrounding environment, as I say, we have 12,000 folks enrolled in the program juxtaposed to say in Burbank, a little more than half our size, 2,000. So, Glendale has a very generous program, and you can see that as, it's a flat amount, but equates the 25% of what the average bill is, that folks are able to take advantage of this very unique program. Our eligibility guidelines really mirror the CPUC, which is pretty consistent throughout. Thus, one of the things that had come up by way of Commission and was analyzed by the staff is actually having a stepped-up low-income discount program. So, instead of $10, that would go to $11, $12, $12.50, $12.50, and $13. You could see what the net impact is here on the low-income bill, but you can also see that even though it's a flat amount, we would, we would keep it equal to about 25% of the bill. The reason why we want to keep this as a flat amount is because this here is an average usage cost. So, folks who do a really good job of conserving, if we tied this strictly as a percentage, they actually would have less of a discount. As a flat amount, it provides a consistent type of benefit. All that said, the Commission considered this over two meetings over this past month. They had been talking about this for some time. They did recommend the 87522 plan to the council, but they did provide a few provisos that we want to make sure that we relay to the council for your consideration. They had extensive discussion about whether or not the $124 million reserve level was proper, and meaning that it could go up, but it also could go down. When you did the study and made the policy in '06 of $124 million, that was, on a risk assessment, there, you could have gone higher and been very conservative, you could have gone lower and been very liberal, you went to the low side of moderate at $124 million. There's no real right or wrong answer, and in fact, there are a number of municipal utilities around the country that operate with no reserves. Certainly, we would not recommend that to you, but by the same token, I think you can look at the city of Glendale's own reserve policy and draw some comparisons there in terms of what that number should be. But again, the Commission was asking you to consider that and maybe ratchet it down, if maybe even ratchet it up, depending on how the council felt. Because the rates under this program do increase, and there is a net new increase in utility user revenue to the general fund that should be realized based on this plan, the Commission has offered to you to consider, consider using new UUT revenues to offset the impact of the general fund transfer and provide that relief back to the rate payer, either through, primarily through the rate adjustments which can be, can be used to bring down the cost. The Commission, thirdly, wanted to ensure that the low-income discount was something that was meaningful, and they focused on maintaining as close to 25% as possible, recognizing that it's a flat fee, and want to revisit that on an annual basis and suggest and recommend to the council that you do the same. And lastly, because the discussion had materialized over the last several months, sometimes rhetorically, sometimes quite pointedly, as to whether or not Glendale should be in the utility business, the electric utility business, if indeed, the council was reluctant to move forward with a rate plan, a comprehensive rate plan that course corrects for GWP, then actually take the time to do the study and determine whether or not we should be in the electric business, either as a sole proprietor or as part of a larger subregional JPA. So, should the So, should the council adopt a rate plan? Well, if the answer is no, then we should be prepared to divest in some way, shape, or form in three to five years, or gut other essential public services. Throw this cost of service analysis out, reduce the transfer, reduce other costs, whatever those other costs may be. And what you'll hear tonight, certainly what you've seen in emails from folks, is go cut some more. But folks are awfully hard pressed to come up with realistic suggestions as to what that some more should be. At the end of the day, this is a full-service city and our costs are what they are, and moreover, they've been drilled into and refined over the course of the Great Recession. On the other hand, if you are looking at approving a rate program, there's the staff recommendation, there's the other alternative rate plans, and I need to stress that under the cost of service analysis that is centered on the proposed rate plan by staff, you have some ability to variate around that, maybe a percent, maybe a half a percent. You start to stray too far away from that COSA, then you basically negate the validity of that cost of service analysis, and we have to throw it out and go develop a whole new set of options. Again, easier said than done because what that means is that you'll have to look at what all the revenue needs are for GWP in their entirety, from the procurement of energy, from the, the infrastructure replacement, to the MNO costs up to and including the transfer, and personnel costs. Those are the four main drivers of cost for the utility. And say, we are going to sacrifice this element or that element and come up with that alternative rate plan. Thus, as you consider this as a policymaking body, you have to understand what those trade-offs are, whether or not you pay now or pay later, the Jiffy Lube model. We can either take care of what needs to be taken care of as soon as we can and pivot from the trajectory that we're on, or pay a considerable amount later on. Also understanding that it's very, it is eerily reassuring in terms of having to make unpopular decisions that many of the arguments that we've heard heading into tonight, and I'm sure you'll hear tonight, are actually the very same arguments that we heard last year with an even lower proposed multi-year rate increase. The point being that there's really never a good time to catch up. Folks have, have, you know, sometimes sincerely and earnestly, sometimes snarkily, said, well, the city council should have increased rates by 2% a year during the Great Recession. It's a lot easier to say that today than it would have been back then when folks were wondering if the entire economy was going to fall off the ledge. We are where we are today, and the saving grace for GWP and for you as a policymaking body is that when you look at what the rates would be under the, under the proposed rate plan, you still will be highly competitive in the market with respect to the surrounding agencies and municipal utilities, and their cost provides similar levels of service. It would be different if this rate plan puts you at the very upper edge of what the competition and what the market dictates, and in fact, you will be either at the very low end or right smack dab in the middle. Should you modify the reserve policy? That is a question for this, this council, but I would submit to you that as we indicated at the very beginning, all of these elements are tied together, and to the extent that you have a healthy reserve, you have tremendous options downstream with respect to passing on future unanticipated costs to your residents. And for folks, again, that would cynically say, well, you're not going to do that, I would only point back to the last several years when in fact, the council did do that. Costs, the, the rates were reduced. Can the COSA be reshaped? As I mentioned earlier, it can, but you have to be very careful or run the risk of playing fast and loose with Prop 26, and certainly, we do not recommend that. Thus, you can look at kicking the can down the road, which probably means that you're increasing your backend costs on a geometric level because things get more expensive the further out you go, and ignore some of those problems, or you can course correct today, which is an intense shorter-term increase. We do recommend the proposed rate plan for all of the reasons that were outlined in this presentation. We know that as a, as a business entity, as an enterprise, that GWP needs to make sure that we have certainty amid all of the variables. The world is an imperfect place, and we need to be able to provide that level of service because at the end of the day, whether it's a $4 a month increase, or a $9 a month increase, or a no dollar a month increase, folks want the lights to come on when they flip the switch. Thus, for your consideration, we have the rate plan. We're happy to answer any questions. The appropriate actions would be introducing an ordinance and the resolution for establishing the electric rates. I'd be happy to.
Do we have any questions at this time? I have 32 cards.
Could I have a quick comment? All right, go ahead.
32 cards.
Go ahead.
Okay. We'll start now. Mr. Cho, do you want to go get a glass of water? That was 45 minutes nonstop.
I did say.
That's okay, go get a drink. No. Huh? No, no more cards. Okay. Quiet. I told you during this discussion, no mumbling. I see people mumbling, turning around, talking. I can't hear it up here, but I know you're disrupting others around you. So none of that, no booing, no hissing, no, nothing. Sit and listen. You don't have to use your two minutes either if you don't want to. And if you want to leave after you make your statements, fine with us. We'll be here to the bitter end. Okay, here we go. And we're, the first speaker is Alex Sani. I can't say your first name. When you come up, please say your name for the record. Name for the record. Alex Sani?
Arusiyak.
Arusiyak.
Sorry, this is one for me. I can't read that right. Followed by Ira Bland. Shh, shh.
This is Arusiyak Alex Sani. We are low income, we can't pay this, it is difficult for us because the bill is very high. We can't pay this if you can dis- decrease these bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ira Bland, followed by Rafi Mardarosian.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Staff. My name is Ira Bland, and I'm the President of the Glendale Association of Realtors. Our 1,500 members live and work here in Glendale. We work hard, very hard, to represent all property interests, homeowners, home buyers, business owners, and tenants. We understand that the quality of life we all enjoy in Glendale is dependent on the outstanding services, police, fire, libraries, recreation, our city offers. Although we, just like you, don't like the idea of paying more in electric rates, after serious study and discussion, we have concluded that the city and the city council have little choice but to adopt the rate plan as proposed by staff. We understand we are way past the time of just saying no. We understand we no longer have the luxury of putting off increases. If GWP is to stay solvent and be able to deliver the electricity on which we all depend, you must say yes to this, this proposal. Without bond funding for capital projects, we will become obsolete. With, without reserves replenished, we pay more in the long run for those capital projects. Without some sort of annual transfer to the general fund, we will be forced to cut city services, we all expect. The proposal protects low-income residents. We ask you to make sure it also funds programs that provide incentives for solar power and energy-efficient programs. Our residents deserve help as they try to either generate their own electricity or cut their electricity use, energy use. We also believe the other recommendations from the commission are valid. Go back and review the level of cash reserve really necessary, review the transfers to the general fund, especially in light of the expected increases in the utility users' tax, and have a discussion about the long-term viability of the city as an electricity provider. But most of all, we urge you not to let history repeat itself. Adopt this plan, which rights the ship, and then adopt a policy that calls for cost of living increases as needed, so the homeowners and businesses will never again have to face this kind of increase we are talking about today. We urge you to adopt the plan and wise fiscal policy for the future.
Thank you. Thank you to the Board of Realtors for your understanding. Rafi Mardarosian, followed by Gon Temshin. I know some are downstairs, so. If Stan Tem- Temshin.
Temshin.
Well, you're a tag team?
We're a tag team, so we're both from.
Glendale Adventist Medical Center.
Thank you.
So you're going to take two minutes, and you're going to take two minutes? Is that it?
We'll probably be less than that. Is that okay?
I mean, you can.
So we, just looking at the rate increase, we looked at some of our other hospitals in Southern California, Edison, PG&E, LA, Department of Water and Power. We have a very large bill, as you can imagine, we're a large user. We calculated this increase to be about $1 million a month for us at the end of the five years. It's a very large hit, especially in the healthcare market that we face with the new, new regulations coming up. We would just urge, and, and we looked at those other rates, not scientific, but they look like they're, like we're about in line with what we're paying here with what's, what those other providers are paying for large commercial customers. So, you know, we understand that the, we would just urge a slowdown and a more gradual increase in the rates if it meant borrowing more funds. We understand that the, that the utility has a low, low debt ratio, so if it were possible, maybe borrow additional money and slow down the increase, it would be, be beneficial to us. Nice presentation, by the way, it was very informative.
Is that it?
Well, actually, you covered most of the questions.
Okay, would you both say your names for the record?
Pardon?
Would you both say your names for the record? Did they?
Oh, I'm Stan Temshin, Director of Facilities at Glendale Adventist Medical Center.
Rafi Mardarosian, Facilities Manager at Glendale Adventist Medical Center.
I was born there.
Ah. It's been there for many years.
No, it was called a sanatorium when I was born there. That explains me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tabor Malakian? Tabor? That is Tabor. Ian C. Tabor?
Malakian.
Yeah.
Oh, it's Talar.
Ah, she is here. Oh, it's an A. Your handwriting. I, I will, I'm just trying to get pronunciation right here. Kenneth Langdon. Langdon, the next one.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, city council members, city staff and public. My name is Talar Malakian, and I am the Executive Director of the Armenian National Committee of America Glendale Chapter. In July, the ANCA Glendale Chapter hosted a survey regarding the Glendale Water and Power electrical rate increases. The survey was intended to both educate community members regarding the proposed increases as well as to allow for feedback. After over 600 businesses and residents were surveyed, more than 88.1% of people that took the survey mentioned that they do not support the proposed percentage of the increase, though they understand the need for an increase to meet state mandates and to complete the needs related to infrastructure. The ANCA Glendale appreciates the cooperation and the hard work demonstrated by your management team and the responses they have provided to our questions. But based on our review of the information we have received, an overwhelming 88.1% opposition to the current proposal through our survey, collecting over 600 signatures within the last two days in our petition against the current proposed rates, we kindly request that you consider the following alternatives. Propose more moderate rate increases, substantially reduce the transfer of funds to the general fund over the course of the next five years, reduce the level of cash reserve, and/or replenish the reserve fund at a slower rate, authorize a $40 million electric bond instead of a $16 million electric bond, lower the pay-go for capital projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth Langdon, next, and then Ian Friesen.
Good evening, Kenneth Langdon. The real reason for the proposed electric rate increase, from 1997 to 2010, the city council transferred over $60 million in GWP water receipts to the general fund in violation of State Prop 218. The city council, number two, used $60 million in bonds intended for GWP infrastructure for the smart meters. Number three, for the last five years, the city council has transferred over $121 million in GWP electric receipts to the general fund in violation of the city charter. Any of these actions by this body to pass a rate increase will be in violation of Prop 26. You cannot justify a rate increase with $21 million being transferred to the general fund. There is no surplus. This council also failed to disclose that ratepayers will be subject to a 7% utility user tax on top of this illicit rate increase. You want to raise the rates, but you allow GWP bonuses. That's totally irresponsible. A Cho said that if the city stopped the transfer, it would need to lay off 131 staff. That is a much better alternative. You would kill two birds with one stone. You save $21 million in, in transfers, and you get rid of tens of millions of dollars in top-heavy management, not police and fire personnel, but top-heavy management. You may pass this proposed increase, but this issue is not going to go away. It's not business as usual. This will be a defining moment for the ratepayers. The business and the residents will come together, we will organize, and we will hold this body accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. I told you, how many times have I told you? You can't even listen. You think you know about the electric rates, you can't even listen to what I'm telling you. No clapping. What is it with you? No mumbling? I will have you escorted out the next time. We got plenty of police here, you'll be taken out. Now behave, don't act like children. Next speaker, Ian Friesen, followed by Mike Minassian. Mr. Friesen, are you downstairs? Mr. Rens, can you check?
I assume you want.
Go on, okay. Mike Minassian? I can handle it.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmen, Council Lady. My name is Mike Minassian. I'm 30 years a resident of Glendale. I'm a public servant, I'm a presidential award winner to serve the elderly and the needy in the city. This rate hike is going to impact the middle class and the poor. And just an example, that my 80-years-old mother loved to go to backyard and water the garden, you know, she likes, she loves the gardening. And every time she opens the faucet, I almost get a heart attack. That's enjoyment for me. And the way the electric bill goes up, the water goes up, maybe I have to cut a big hole in my roof, so when the sun is down, maybe moon is going to come down and take it over, so I won't turn on the electricity. The, the people who scraping by is going to be harder for them, but those who, who do well, making $200,000, $150,000 right here in the city, that's not going to impact them. Those people who make little money, that's going to impact them. So, so when you go home, maybe the voice of your conscience think about those people who scraping by. Thank you.
Thank you. Monika Zedoni, followed by Frank Gallo. They'll set them aside till they show up. First Karapetian.
Do you have the presentation?
What, what's your name?
My name is Frank Gallo.
Oh, okay. Okay, go right ahead.
City council members, you are there because we, the people of Glendale, listen to you when you ask for our vote. Now, with that petition, we... we, the people of Glendale, are asking from you to listen to us. The numbers presented by the city manager actually represent people, real people, people whose lives will be deeply impacted by those increases. Can we have the second slide, gentlemen? Can we have the second one? The electric consumption figures that Mr. Ochoa presented of about 669 kilowatts hour per month probably are good for the winter time, but for the summertime, they are much higher because people need to use the air conditioning. Many of us already have problems paying our bills, as they are right now. How do you expect us to pay those bills when we use the AC during the summertime? There are people here who are on fixed incomes. If you ask one of those persons, one of those people to choose between paying the AC bill or paying for medication and food, they will choose the later one, even if that means staying in a very hot environment that can put their lives at risk. So, do you want to carry in your conscience a person's death because you ignored their plea because they died of heat stroke? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is Dodari, has she shown up? No, Mr. Friesen has not. Okay, Breschka Apesian? Ah, there you are. He didn't look, the other guy, Mr. Gallo didn't look like you. I thought two names saying, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, staff and public, thank you for this opportunity to address you. I want to call your attention to electrical utility operating statistic posted on the GWP website. Retail usage decreased by 5.7% from 1.16 million megawatt hours in 2007, 2008 to 1.09 million megawatt hours in 2011, 2012. Production and transmission expenses during this period have increased by 3% or 4.7 million. And interest and other expenses have increased by 27% or 2.7 million. Although these seem to be large amounts over a five-year period, they're not astronomical increases that is, that are being shown as expenses to justify why we need to increase the rates by the amount that it is. According to your staff responses to our written questions, 46.6 million was spent on non-modernization capital expenditures in fiscal years 2011 and 2012. So, money was spent to the tune of 46.6 million, but it appears that the reserve has been decreased by a lot more than that. During the period, this period, transfers to the general fund have increased by 2.7 million or 14.7% from 18.4 million in 2007, 2008 to a high of 21.1 million 2011, 2012. The net revenue before expenses for this five-year period was 106.4 million. The total amount transferred was 96.8 million. This should leave GWP with a positive 9.6 million. So, in Armenian, we have a saying, "Zurnas tank shit akrosink." If we sit crooked but talk straight, we will see that the transfers are the problem. Thank you.
Annie Jensen, followed by 818-549-9887. No name, just a phone number. That's the first. Annie Jensen here? Okay, is 818-549? Oh, Annie? Just give your name for the record. Just a second, they'll give you a mic. She's gonna give it to you, right there. Just your name for the record.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm Annie Jensen, longtime resident of Glendale. I live on Riverdale Avenue, close to Pacific Park. In my neighborhood, we're mostly renters. Glendale is a city of renters, like Los Angeles and our neighboring communities. The people that live in my neighborhood are hardworking. There's families with children, tots and teenagers. There's immigrants. There are retirees. There are lots of abuelas and mama johns in the neighborhood. And this rate increase is going to affect us all profoundly. It's going to affect every area of our life. From our transportation to our groceries, to our rent increases, it's going to affect even the occasional dinner out to restaurants and possibly even to our wonderful swimming pool at Pacific Park. I don't have any solutions, but I'm just very uncomfortable with this, with this rate increase. As a suggestion, reading some of the information that was posted up here and the cuts to the library and to our social, our services within the parks. You know, Mr. Ochoa, you stated that, and it's written in one of the handouts, that you're going to lay off 131 people, possibly, if this rate doesn't go through these employees in the city of Glendale. And we can start there instead of hitting the libraries and the, and the community yards and that. You know, other cities have job shares implemented businesses, and it works. It works for all of us. And I would just like you all to keep up the most in your mind, the greatest good for the greatest number. Thank you for your time and your ears.
Thank you for coming. Next speaker is the 818-549-9887 here? No, I have plenty of time. Next speaker, Jose Postagian, followed by Aram Kazazian. Yes. Jose?
Jose first. He thinks it's him first.
Is Jose here? Oh, I'm sorry. He didn't react. I'm sorry. Your next, Aram.
Good evening. My name is Jose Postagian and I am a longtime resident in Glendale. And I want to continue living in Glendale. Unfortunately, we live on a very fixed income. And every penny we spend until it is, we have to cut in something else. Now, we try to keep our conditioning off most of the time, even in summer, because we can afford it. We have a little house, it's only 1,500 feet, and we spend $270 approximately in electricity. And that's almost, that's too much for us. Why are we still transferring 21 million dollars? We can keep it to help the people, not somebody else. Please, we are hurting. It costs too much money to support ourselves, and you try to put some more in it. I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Aram Kazazian, followed by Francis Opitz.
Yeah, my name is Aram Kazazian. By the way, what Bert said, I, you know, I totally agreed to it. What you heard today, you had the presentation for over an hour, so I needed an hour to come, answer those questions for you. Is that okay? Two hours, thank you.
No, that's two minutes.
Okay. Most of those were inaccurate information. If anybody in this place pays $39 for electricity a month, I'll eat my chocolate chip cookie. Anybody pays $39 a month? I don't know. I'll eat my chocolate chip cookie now. There is no such thing. Nobody pays that. Everybody's bill is over 120, 150, and the bigger homes are about $800, $900. So, this is all, you know, that presentation, you saw. I would take it like and put it in the trash can, like I said it yesterday, too. LED WP rates are much, much lower. I have a friend of mine that lives there. I've compared the rates. They pay way lower than we do. Only a refrigerator, just only a refrigerator running, it's gonna cost you $30 a month. Just a refrigerator. What do you want, people to go out to putting ice box, ice, ice in their refrigerator now? Use those? It's totally unacceptable. It's unacceptable. You should stop the transfers. Stop the transfers. And if you wanna take DWP off your books, sell it to the people. Let the people themselves run it. So, at least a group people can run it much better than it's been run. You knew that, this council knew five years ago, Glendale Water and Power is gonna be losing money. You knew it. You would inform five years ago, and nobody paid attention. And the starburst started over here. No, no, we were careful. We know what we're doing. Apparently, they didn't know about it. Thank you. And stop the transfers.
Next speaker, Francis Opitz, followed by Judy Lan.
My name is Francis Opitz and I'm a longtime resident of Glendale. I've enjoyed living here. But I must say that I do also live in a very limited income arrangement. So, this increase would profoundly affect me. I won't be able to pay my bills and do the other things I'm used to doing. So, I urge you, please do not have this increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Lan, followed by Mike Mohill.
Hi, dear Councilmen. I mean, almost everyone, I voted for you for the election. My name is Judy Lan, and I don't know whether you guys shopping in grocery or not. You shop in the grocery, in the market, you will see the price increase. All the food, especially the chicken, which is the best or cheapest I can afford. And from the, for example, the breast, usually, I never buy the food on regular price. I shop only when they are on sale because I have limited income after I retire. I can see the breast from 99 cents on sale raise up to $1.59 or $1.99. You don't shop. Ask whoever in your household who shop in the market. With the increase so much in the food, I think I cannot afford to the raise of utility for the next five years. I mean, we know all the baby boomer who is, who are retiring every year. I'm one of them. I really wish, you want to raise, raise minimum instead of 87522. That is really tremendous raise to take away my food, you know, from, to the utility. And those is all necessity to our life. I really wish all the city councilmen can really consider that. And thank you for everybody.
Thank you. Mike Mohill, followed by Gary Zorabian.
Before I start, I wish Mr. Najarian would come back and sit in front of the City Council.
You've got your two minutes.
Councilmembers, my name is Mike Mohill. Our City Council and GWP are going to circumvent Proposition 26. Proposition 26 requires voter's approval when a city imposes any rate increases related to property rights. The proposed electric rates increases will be approximately 30% compounded over the next five years and only on the kilowatts used plus additional fixed cost. In addition, when the variable green fuel commodity is added, the actual electrical rate increase can be 70% or more. Also, from 2007 through 2015, water rates will have gone up 51%. As a former candidate for the 2013 election, I said to the voters and stated in mailers, if they want to have their electric and water rates increased, fees and taxes increased, as well as new bonds, please by all means, support and vote for the incumbent candidates. And the voters did. I further stated the incumbent candidates, Freeman and Najarian, would tell the public my facts and information were wrong. Last week, Councilman Quintero further tried to discredit my information, and Mayor Weaver cheered him on when he implied because I sold fertilizer, I must be full of it. Will councilmembers? Yes. I was an honest salesman and I have integrity. And unlike you, I have not sold myself to the city union and bosses at the expense of the voters who put you all in office. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Mr. Mohill, and I didn't say what you said I said. Next speaker is Gary Zorabian, followed by Roland. Wait up. Followed by, just a second, Roland Kadikian.
My name is Gary Zorabian. I received my GW bill two months ago. If I don't pay it by next week, I will receive a letter from GWP warning me they will cut my services. I have a letter, I have a small saying to Mr. Sinania. Remember when you were running for election? You sent me a letter with your picture on it, with your family picture, promises you made. What happened to those promises? You're not doing your promises whatever you may, you may, you may say you're gonna do it. Well, GWP spokesman was talking about 2007, 2008. At that time, people were working. Now, money had value at that time. People not working these days, money has no value. What can you buy with $100? Maybe an old chicken. What's going on? We have 600 signatures already to give them to you if you would like to receive them. I hope that you will consider this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Roland Kadikian, followed by, you say it.
Volodya Hachatrian. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Roland Kadikian, and I am here today to urge you to consider better options with regards to the rate increases. I don't appear much here today. I don't question every single issue that comes, but I felt I'm compelled to come and talk about this particular issue. I had an opportunity to review the different comments on the different petitions that have been submitted. And across the board, without reiterating the opinions of every individuals with regards to the transfers and whether the utility or the state of the utility, I want to let you know that overall, the image that you get or the response that you get is respect my intelligence. Tell me what exactly it is that you need. And that's the issue that I would like to bring to you. Don't scare us with Glendale is a safe city because we have the police department. Yes, we are happy with the police department, but Glendale is a safe city because we have great people as well. It's not the Wild West. If the cops are not here, not everybody's gonna jump me now. So, let's not scare the people. Let's tell them the truth. Let's do the right thing. I urge you to consider, to itemize the benefits that the GWP gets for the transfers. I urge you to reduce the transfers according to the itemized GW benefits that it gets. And I also urge you to reduce the proposed rate increases. As an attorney, I deal with very much veterans who are in financial difficulties, and this is what will impact them most. Overall, Glendale is a safe city. I wish you best in making this difficult decision, but I urge you to be considerate of the difficult situation of the low-income individuals. Giving the $10 is not enough. They do not need handouts. They want the ability to stand up on their own, be recognized with dignity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Yolanda. What'd you say?
Volodya.
Volodya.
Volodya. Are you here?
Volodya Hachatrian.
Put it aside in case she comes up. Tony Passarella, followed by Sandy Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, mayor, council, and staff. My name is Tony Passarella, twenty-seven-year resident of the city of Glendale. And I disagree with Mr. Kazazian about throwing that presentation in the trash. I thought it was an amazing presentation. The colors were beautiful. I mean, Mr. Ochoa talked just at the right speed. I could understand every single word that he said. I digested the whole thing, and I come to a different conclusion. I want my electric rate increases. I can't wait to get the bill. I'm going to frame the bill. I'm going to go home now and hug my smart meter. Mr. Ochoa, you totally transformed me with that presentation. Thank you very much for that. Not. This is bad news for the people in this city on social security. This is bad news for the people living in South Glendale. This is bad news for those business, those mom-and-pops shops that are barely making it right now. And I'm going to, I'm going to conclude this by challenging you, Mr. Sinanian. You promised that you were going to be for the people at those forums. I was at every one of those forums, and I heard you say, I'm going to fight for the people. I challenge you to fight for the people and deny this rate increase. I challenge you to do that, sir.
Next speaker, Sandy Wilson, followed by Edward Harutunian.
Good evening to each one of you on the council. I brought my.
Name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. You call my name, and I'm here. Wasandre Wilson, known as Sandy Wilson.
Thank you.
I'm a forty-one-year resident of the city. And I live on a very limited income, a widow's benefit of about eleven hundred dollars a month. From October, November, December, and January of last year, I had to pay eight hundred dollars for water and power. And it was just by the grace of God that the lady I talked to at G W P allowed me to just make payments so I could get this bill paid off. There's only two senior citizens in the family, an eighty-seven-year-old cancer survivor and myself, and I take care of him. And it's going to be really hard if you raise my rates because I'm barely making it now. I can hardly keep my head above water. I'm buying my groceries at the ninety-nine cent store. And as this lady said while ago, I look for sales, and I'm always looking for a bargain somewhere. But I can't support you and this council and G W P and keep my head above water and live in this city. And if you're trying to push me out after forty-one years, then I guess you're just going to go ahead and raise my rate. And I want the people of Glendale to know that you all have signed on to the United Nations ecly and that this is just the beginning of what you're trying to do to help the people of Glendale to lose their freedoms.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Council members, my name is Edward Harutunian. I've been in Glendale for about thirty years now. Recently, I've been getting a lot of letters from G W P that my electricity was too high. Reduce, reduce, reduce. So I did. Now, everybody in Glendale did the same thing. So the revenue came down. This happened a couple of years ago with the water department. Reduce your water. So we reduced our water, and then the revenue went down. They wrote us, oh, we have to increase the rates. Now, I've noticed that recently in Glendale, we have at least half a dozen huge projects going on. Did the city think about it, how they're going to provide utilities for this huge project? I don't think so. Now, they need the money to provide for them. And who's going to pay for it? These people who are barely making it. Forget about the mountain and over there, look the other side, where ninety percent of people, including myself, are struggling. I've got a small business. I've got a small condo that I have to take care. Now, thirty percent, now, I'm going to ask you, any of gentlemen, do you think you're going to get any increase in your salaries of twenty-nine percent in the future, in next year or year after that? No. None of you will get that. Where do you expect us to get the money to pay for it? That's all. You have to consider where people are going to get their money to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Ellis, followed by, I can't say.
Pam Ellis first. Pam Ellis first.
You're next. You're next.
Duke Hacortnek.
Okay. You go first. We have a translator coming. Excuse me.
So far, he has said that him and his wife are paying seven hundred, over seven hundred dollars for their bills, and they are so far struggling with them.
I'm sorry. Actually, he said that's, that's the social security or pension that him and his wife are collecting.
So that's the social security that they're collecting. Charanoke?
Charanoke. Ayu. Ayu. He's saying that his rent is already expensive and all his other expenses are heavy on them, and so if you increase the costs every year, it's going to be hard on them. That's what he's saying.
Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Okay, Pam Ellis, followed by Brian Ellis.
Good evening. My name is Pam Ellis. I wanted just to come down tonight and to voice my opposition to the rate increase until you stop the transfer of funds. I know this is a difficult thing to maneuver, but it needs to be done. It's not proper to continue the transfer. And I also wanted to mention that in a digital age, and I know about thirty years ago, we talked petition council and got them to meet it in the evening, so these kind of presentations would be possible and public could come. But in a digital age, it seems to me that it's time that we be able to give you our input and be publicly displayed without having to come down here because all of us work, and it's, you know, it's very difficult. So if there's some means that the I T department can figure out where we can do something maybe like the congressman does in the area, I would certainly appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Brian Ellis, followed by Brian Weber.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Brian Ellis. I'm a resident of Glendale. I first like to say hello to Mr. Sinanian and welcome to council. This is my first appearance in front of council since you've been on.
Thank you. Hello.
I'm here opposed to the transfer utility rates into general government. I had a chance while Mr. Ochoa was making his presentation to read from the COSA study that he referred to, and it says here briefly, guiding global principles should apply to the G W P. Rates should be cost-based and set at a level that provides funding for the full revenue requirement of utility. Funding general government is not part of G W P's mission, and you should need to stop taking the money from it. Now, you asked, well, how can we do these things? One would be take it down five million dollars a year for the next four years. There is some places that. Another example would be, and I'm not here to tell you how to do your job, fifteen years ago or twenty years ago, we publicized the ambulance service in Glendale. It's been a major cost to the city. Go back to a private service. A M R would be happy to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian Weber, followed by Regarke Meslumian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Brian Weber. I have been a resident of Glendale since nineteen seventy-five and enjoy living in the high-quality community that this is. If you look at the Glendale City Charter, as I have, seems to me it says you have the ability to transfer surplus funds from G W P to the general fund. The current condition of G W P, the current financial condition of G W P suggests that the funds that were transferred over the last five years were not surplus, but were in fact essential to the operational and capital needs of the utility. That, to me, is a violation of the city charter. What you are asking the ratepayers to do is solve that problem, to repay, in essence, to repay the deficit of the general fund through electrical rate increases. That's one class of citizen. It does not represent all of the citizens of Glendale, and I think it's unfair and quite probably unconstitutional. I would ask you to consider other alternatives. Must be many, many of those. I certainly appreciate the fact that some rate increase, given Mr. Ochoa's expert presentation and analysis, are going to be necessary, but I think asking the ratepayers to solve all of the city's financial problems is simply unfair and unjust. Thank you. Oh, I should mention one more thing. The group I have become affiliated with that was formed in response to the proposed rate increase has submitted petitions opposing this increase with six hundred signatures on those, and I believe you should take that into consideration as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Gregory Meslumian. Did I say that right?
Gregory Meslumian?
I'll hold it aside. Is that him? Followed by Tomek Azarian.
Is Angleren Chigitem.
Translator, time to say his name for earlier.
It's. It's. He says if he turns the air conditioner on, the air will come. But if he doesn't turn on, the air will not come. But it's very tough for him to live with these heat going on. He says people who lived before him, the old man before him, he said, he lives with his wife. So now he lives with his wife. So if you consider, make your consideration before you take your vote on this thing. Do whatever you like.
Charanoke. Thank you. Tomek Azarian, followed by Zaro Shahiyaniyan.
Honorable mayor, city council members, city staff and public, my name is Tomek Azarian. As a resident student of Glendale, I helped my parents pay our bills. With this rate increase coming up, I ask you to reconsider the percentages proposed because I do not feel that I will be able to support my family and my cause with so much in our city being expensive, including this. What is the guarantee that five years from now that we won't have such a dramatic rate increase like this one? How do I know the officials I elect are being responsible when such a high increase is facing the community and when it is in the past, they have done nothing to correct it? It is not my responsibility as a student to juggle the costs associated with our city's irresponsibility. I ask that you consider lower rates for me and the rest of the students in our city who are struggling. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Zaro Shahiyaniyan. I'm sorry, I'm butchering names tonight.
Zaro Shahiyaniyan is my name.
Thank you.
Good evening. With respect to mayor and all city councils, members, I think the simple question is whether the public agrees with that proposal or not. And you can see that all the people here, plus many of Glendale people who cannot even speak English, that's why they didn't come or they don't want to talk, they disagree with this proposal. And I was thinking about the reasons. I was looking to my water bill and my Glendale Water and Power bill, and it is manufactured in such a way that automatically it keeps increasing. For example, if there's a fuel adjustment charge. There wasn't a fuel adjustment charge before, but when the price of the fuel went up, so it was added in there, so I'm sure that the amount of the fuel adjustment charge is going to increase as the price of the gas limits up. So what I'm trying to say, everything affects the other one. So if the price of the electric increases, so it's going to affect the price of the fuel again because the gas station is using fuel, it's going to affect the price of everything else, grocery for regular people, and because everybody wants to make profit. So if they have more expenses, then they have to ask for more money. I'm talking on behalf of all the tenants that I have here in Glendale, my friends that I talk to, and none of them agree with this, so.
Thank you very much.
My time is over?
Yes, your time is over.
Of course, one more thing. It is difficult to compete with a one-hour speech that the Glendale Water and Power met. He spoke for hours, and now we have only two minutes.
Sir, if I allowed each person here, sir, if I allowed every person here to have an hour, that'd be three hundred and twenty hours before we'd get done.
Yeah.
And that's not very realistic.
That's not realistic. That's why we cannot compete anyhow.
Of course you can. Thank you very much for coming.
The purpose is that we disagree.
Thank you. Mr. Sharikian, is it Hayer or?
Haraya.
Haraya Sharikian. Not here? I'll go back over the others. Volodya? No? Nope.
That's my number.
You'll get more in two minutes. Fedora Nika? Oh, you're here. Manika?
Yes.
Ah, good. And Mr. Friesen?
Good afternoon, honorable mayor, council members. My name is Monica Suduri, and I'm a student. I just want to come up and say that I'm opposed to the proposed plan because I feel as though it's a bit ridiculous because the people of Glendale can barely pay their rents down. I know you've heard this speech numerous times, repetitively, but not only do I feel this way, but I spoke to many people who live in the city of Glendale, and I've done surveys, and I've gone to recreational centers, parks, just to get people's opinions, and I feel that. I feel that people strongly are against it because, at the end of the day, the city council members should act on the part of the people. And if the people strongly oppose the plan, which they do, as you've seen a turn-up, of today's turn-up at least, I feel like we should work progressively for their favor. So if I were a city council member, I would want to work towards or for the benefit of the people, and I know you all feel this way as well. So I beg of you, if you could just please consider even lessening the percentage increases. I think it would be very beneficial for the people. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Okay, that's my last speaker. There'll be no more speaker cards or speakers. Before comments, does my colleagues have any questions of staff? Okay, well, I'm going to take the latitude of speaking first for once, get this over with for me. So I've worked on this since Friday, studied everything I could lay my hands on since Friday up until quarter of six tonight. I wrote down my comments so I could keep them organized, and obviously, I'm not going to please everybody with my comments. Never have in 17 years, so I expect it now. So this is what I've written. Tonight culminates the results of a 10-member rate plan advisory committee, six community meetings, two meetings in parks, special meetings with the Glendale Chamber of Commerce, Glendale Association of Realtors, large commercial customers, Omar's Corning Council, and the Armenia National Committee. I watched the Glendale Water and Power Committing Meeting on Monday. It was unanimous vote for the city's recommendation. Four or five people spoke in opposition. I precede about 15 to 20 emails, all of them negative on it. Most of the emails said that the 30% rate increase is too much. The other 194,000 residents have not spoken at all, for whatever reason. But actually, the rate in the first year is quite low. I guess for me, a couple gallons of gasoline is equivalent to the first year's rate that is being proposed. Of course, I drive a car. When our founding fathers incorporated this city back in 1906, I bet they thought that they would need a police department, a fire department, a public works department, and probably a water and power department at the least. Do you think that they considered making the water and power department a separate entity unto themselves, that that department could collect revenue and keep it for themselves? To now say in 2013 that water and power stands alone, and it's not part of the city, and then when you start talking about the transfer, it's like from this entity to this entity, I don't get it. I don't think our founding fathers thought that way. Now, if you go to LA, LA Department of Water and Power is an entity unto itself. It has been that way for decades. Let's look at the reality. Since 2008, overall revenue has decreased by some 30 million. We've got many new mandates that have been placed on our city in the past few years. A mandate is a you-must-do. State does it all the time. Unfunded mandates. We have new regulatory mandates. Renewable energy is going to have to go up to 33% of all the energy that comes in. AQMD requirements, going to put new fees on. EPA, new emission regulations. Congress, state, continue to pass new unfunded mandates and tell us, do it. And we say, with what money? We don't have options on mandates. So where do you think the money's going to come from? The rate structure that we and you have to pay. We also have an aging electrical system. Much of our system was put in in the '30s, '40s, '50s. It's getting old. You can't see it, it's in the ground, it's on the lines up above, it's in the power plant, it's in the vaults that are underground. You can't see that. It's understandable, you don't know. If it was an old building, you could tell, it's old. But you can't see this. And we have increased costs of materials to fix the electrical system and to do the maintenance on the system. We've had to use reserves for necessary safety-related electrical repairs to keep the system running. We've been borrowing from the reserves just to keep it running because we don't have the revenue. And we have one of the lowest tax rates in Southern California. We don't have a business license tax like Burbank and Pasadena and LA. We have the lowest property tax rate around. Ours is lower than Burbank and Pasadena. We don't get the revenue that other cities do. I studied that number of years, looking at the Cosmo reports of all the cities in Southern California and all the taxes that they have on their people. Believe you me, we are low compared to others. Our delivery system of our electricity, it's four components as far as I know. There's the production system, that means coal, electrical, Hoover Dam, solar, wind. These come from eight different states across the western United States that provide us with electricity. The transmission system that brings us here, we don't own it. It's owned by others that can set their own rates. Delivery system in the city, yeah, we own it, and that's what we're trying to maintain. And the maintenance of the system is city, and we're trying to maintain. So we sign contracts with those that produce the powers that we need, and they're good for the life of the contract, but the delivery system, the transmission system, that rate is set by somebody else. Glendale's taken steps to deal with the reality of living within a rate structure. As has been said, we reduced 84 positions. Cut about $11 million. Contracts with employees, little or any increase. If you have watched at all what we've been through with the IBW, we held our ground. They didn't get any raise. The capital improvement, only where public safety is required. We've tried to be as efficient and do everything we can within our power to hold costs down, but you can only do so much. Now, the talk of eliminating the transfer to the general fund, to me, is nothing but a red herring. When I got on council back in 97, the transfer then was, when I researched it, was about $10 million. Now it's up to $21, $22. Starting in 2000, 2001, it has started climbing every single year. I was sitting here, I voted. I'd like to tell you some of the things that you, the public, wanted, and we did an increased transfer to give you these things. Now, we can always take them away. Increased library hours. Increased revenue for the Humane Society. Maryland Orient Street garages. New police officers and support staff. Code enforcement officers. Number of mini-parks. Skate park. Police building. Euphemion Park improvements. Sarita School. Pacific Edison. Park property. Adams Square Library. Glendale Sports Complex. Increased street sweeping. Reopening Spar Heights Community Center. Those are some. Those are annualized costs to give you what you wanted. We sat here as councils, and we gave it to you, but money came with increased transfers. Now, if we were to get out of the utility business, somebody like Pacific Edison, Southern California Edison, would step in. Guess what? You're not going to set the rates. Southern California Edison will set the rates. Their employees, IBW, with what they've just done in Los Angeles, or been doing for years in Los Angeles, demanding higher and higher salaries and rates. You let somebody else come in here, like Edison or LA, they're supposed to be so low, which they're not, they're going to set the rate structure, and this council will not be able to do a thing about it. If another thing that would happen, if we get rid of the utility, we wouldn't have any money to transfer. That's taken care of. So we can either start eliminating all these nice things that I just read off, or lay off police, or fire, or the libraries. We could do that. We'll have to do it. We have to... Our first law up here is fiscal responsibility, and if we get rid of the utility, well, we're going to have to deal with what's left. See what else I want to say. Next. And for your information, Prop 26 requires that we can only charge our customers what it costs to run the apartment. Prop 26 is not retroactive, meaning that the transfers to the general fund that have been made for decades and decades, going back to the '40s, is all part of the operations and maintenance of the system. All those transfers, they're in the operation budget, we've done it since I was a baby. So it's nothing unusual, it's been done to give the services that you've wanted. My belief is we should not live in the past, but we should learn from the past. We live in a new age, one in which it's tougher to raise our children with social media being around the way it is, tougher to make a living, educate our children, and build for our own retirements. It's one in which we have a slew of new laws in recent years to regulate how we operate as a county, a state, and a city. Those are not going to go away. Additional regulations, constraints in our city will continue to occur at our costs. Unfunded mandates. Don't you believe the federal government or the state is going to pass new laws and give us the money to take care of them? So whether you like it or not, we, all of us, are going to pay. That's just life. We have to understand that we have to be better at anticipating new mandates and build our reserves in the future. If you think you can just live in where we are and not think something's going to happen, like how about an earthquake, or some other quirk of nature, winds, windstorm, floods, anything like that, where's the money going to come from? Glendale has a history of being able to keep the lights on following events such as earthquakes, the windstorms, the fires. We're back up on quick, faster than anybody around. You think if Southern California Edison has the system, that we're going to be first in line? Huh. Better wait for LA to get theirs up on line, they'll come to us a little later, we're a small city. But the way it is now, we are up and running. You can take that for granted, but it's a luxury, and I've lived through many. I've lived through three or four earthquakes. By God, I didn't go 24 hours without electricity and water. I've learned a lot, and I don't propose to let us relive the past again. I believe we need to look at the future, and I will support the staff recommendation. As much as I know it hurts people, don't think it's lost on me. I have children that live in Glendale, and they have children, and it's tough for them. I understand that. But we can't sit still and do nothing and hope the future's going to take care of it and talk about transfers. Cut the transfers. Well, I just read you the list of what's going to... What's up there and what you can do to take it away. Water and Power Commission recommended that we try to hold the low income relief rate, low family income. I believe in trying to do that. I don't mind at all, as they suggested, studying the reserves, the low-income structure, and UUT. Nothing may change, but it sure doesn't hurt, in the interest of getting everybody more informed of what's going on, to hold those hearings and find out. Now, this is a very complicated issue. I spent four days, and I think I've scratched the surface. So...
President?
No? Sorry.
LA Council...
Please, you're out of order.
21 million dollars illegal...
Would you please take her out? No?
I'm saying if the law...
Out, out, out. Ma'am, you're out.
The Glendale Transfer, 21 million...
Mr. Mayor, I suggest you give her one more warning and then tell her she'll be removed.
I warn you again. I'm warning you again. Sit down. Boy, I've been in classrooms with children and got better attention than you.
I'm asking a question, why can't you respond?
Not now, your time is done, this is council comment, period only. Learn about...
I have a right to...
Okay, now take her out.
Mr. Mayor, I'd suggest you, we take a short recess so that the officers can talk to the lady...
I don't want to take a short recess.
It's fine.
Escort her out.
Mr. Mayor, she's sitting down.
I'm not going to be interrupted again. There's got to be decorum in the place. Now, I've made my speech, and I know it's not pleasing to everybody, but I was elected to give my opinion, I've given my opinion. You can sit there and laugh at me, whatever, but I've lived here 74 years, a lot longer than anybody in this room. I care about my city. Yeah, take another picture, put it in some magazine or something. Hey, that doesn't bother me at all. I made my speech. Now we'll let the other four, and I hope you'll be courteous enough to let them speak without interrupting. Who wants to speak next? Nobody? Okay, you ready for motion? I don't care.
It's an ordinance, introducing an ordinance.
Somebody want to introduce the ordinance?
Point of order. An ordinance, as written, may be modified as long as it's still germane to the original ordinance, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight, you can... The council can suggest any revisions to ordinance that it, you know, it wants to suggest as long as we can justify them legally under the Prop 26 standards, although those are in the resolution. Once it's introduced tonight, any changes that are made next week have to be germane to the original ordinance. So, I mean, there's a lot of room there to make additional changes next week if the council desires.
Okay, here's my question. We have a proposal by staff, 87522.
Correct.
If that ordinance is introduced today, at the next meeting, may a modification to those percent increases be proposed and voted on appropriately?
My answer would be yes, with some caveats. The actual rates, the changes to the base rates themselves are in the resolution, which we would suggest that that come back next week with the ordinance as well. And then the caveat I have, obviously, as Mr. Ocho explained, is that the recommendation, along with the two alternatives, I think have already been sufficiently analyzed for purposes of Prop 26. Any additional changes, we're not sure that those could be made either this week or next week without further study under the cost of service analysis. So depending on what... The answer is yes, depending on what proposal you're suggesting.
Okay. And let me tell you where I'm going. I'm going to be brief, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
First off, let's talk about the transfer. The transfer does many things for our current budget. It funds 40 police officers. It funds 25 firefighters. Or it funds our entire library, parks, and management services.
Or finance...
Now, those that come up and criticize that transfer, I can understand that, but this isn't just an exercise in, you know, eighth-grade mathematics. It's not make the two sides equal. Stopping the transfer has a direct impact on every single person in this room, and perhaps even more so on the elderly that rely so much for us... perhaps even more so on the elderly that rely so much for us on things like the Adult Recreation Center, on things like the senior meals, on things like the libraries. So, don't come up here and say, "Stop the transfer," unless you can give us some concrete suggestions and point to concrete areas and items of our budget where the money can be taken out of. And I will listen to those. But someone that just comes up and says, "Stop the transfer," that doesn't do you justice, that doesn't do us justice. It is our role to make this the best city possible. So, if the 20 million shouldn't be transferred, yes, that'll have an effect on our rates, but I want you to tell us. Get the neighborhoods together. Which neighborhood wants to close the fire station in their neighborhood? Which part of the city wants to reduce the patrol officers? Which, which group of people want their branch library closed? Which people are willing to give up the senior meals? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I've asked her to be removed, and police will not remove her.
No, Mr. Mayor, you've already ruled her out of order, and I, it is appropriate now if you want to have her removed.
I asked for that.
Yeah. My, my only request, though, Mr. Mayor, is that we do take a break, because if she's unwilling to leave, then, then, then you're going to have a situation, and I just would like a break.
How many minutes do you need to remove her?
Well, I'd ask for a three-to-five-minute break.
Ten minutes. All right.
I suggest we take the break at this moment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, recess three minutes.
I'd ahead.
Called the meeting back to order.
In order.
And here's the problem, we had a member of the audience interrupt you several times and you were trying to speak. And I was making my comments and I was interrupted several times. That member of the audience, despite your request to be removed from the room, has not left the room, is currently in the room, has threatened that the only way she will leave the room is if she's dragged out. Personally, I find that a obstruction of the meeting. And therefore, I'm going to cut my remarks short. I understand that should others speak on the, take the point of view that she's in favor of, I think she'll be all, all over that and be very pleased to let them speak. And that's the problem. One person shouldn't shut down the city council from debating an issue. And I think that's terrible. I think what has occurred today is a complete injustice that has occurred. I'm going to wrap up my remarks and introduce someone in the room, Ben Wong. Ben, I hate to put you on the spot. Ben Wong is the representative from Southern California Edison. And he's watching these proceedings and he's watched other proceedings as well. And there is no doubt in my mind that Southern California Edison would not submit a bid for the Glendale Water and Power Department should the offer be made to accept bids. And perhaps that's where the residents are going. If you don't like us to discuss the issues on the rate increases, Southern California Edison and the wisdom of their board and the wisdom of the California Public Utilities Commission that will oversee their rates will certainly be happy to do so. Perhaps we can sell the utility, perhaps we can lease it, get a license fee. But the problem is that that's where it appears that we're going. No offense to Ben, Southern California Edison has great resources. We have someone who's trying to take the pulse of the city by Mr. Wong. But I am going to reserve the rest of my remarks because I do feel if I get a little bit further in stating my opinion as to where I think we should go, I'm going to be shouted down by a member of the public. So it's unfortunate that this has occurred at this time, but I would like the meeting to go forward. I'm willing to introduce the ordinance presented before us.
That's fine, just so people understand, I will be allowing no additional public comment next week unless we make changes to the ordinance that's been introduced, in which case then public testimony will be permitted. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
That's correct, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Who else would like to say a few words?
Okay, I'll go next. Well, I have certainly been looking at this, reading the materials, meeting with the staff, et cetera. And the way I break it down, putting all of the other rhetoric aside, the way I break it down is we need approximately $60 million for a capital improvement program. Things like a substation at Grandview would be in the 20 million range, modernizing Grayson 10 million, another 20 million spent on some of the boilers that need repair, an obligation to the Department of Energy feeder stations, another 10 million for renewable energy, et cetera, et cetera. So it's approximately in the 60 million range. And we currently have 47 million in reserves. GWP has 47 million in reserves. And so I guess the best way to put it is I'm not persuaded, I don't think that eight, seven, the other numbers that are in the ordinance, for me, it just doesn't work. I would be prepared to support a three to four percent increase per year over a three or five-year period, but that would be the max for me. A three to four percent increase would be the max for me. And then generally, Glendale Water and Power and the enterprise that it provides is an integral part of the city of Glendale. It always has been from the very beginning. That's why we don't have Southern California Edison. City of Burbank did the same. The city of Pasadena did the same. The people that originated this city, the original founders of this city, knew that a water and power department would provide funds to run the rest of the city for police, for fire, for libraries, and for everything else. So the idea of a transfer to me is totally normal, totally natural, and to say otherwise just doesn't make any, any sense. We need to continue to replace, modernize, and work on the infrastructure. And I think a flatter and smaller increase would do that. And then to the question of selling to the utility, I think that's the worst possible thing we could do. Both Edison and Pacific Electric in the North and all the rest of the investor-owned utilities, they'll never, ever replace a municipal utility in terms of service and in terms of cost. They have to provide all of the services and all of the maintenance and so forth. And then finally, they have to provide a, generally it's dividends, they have to provide dividends to their shareholders. So the idea of bringing Southern California Edison to the city of Glendale to me is a non-starter. So legally, I guess, what I would like to do is to have this as an alternative to the, to the eight, seven, whatever other percentages were in the, in the proposed ordinance.
If I, if I may speak to that, and I'm not sure if Mr. Ochoa has comments on that as well legally, again, the rates, the actual rate structure is in the resolution. And the, the issue procedurally with that rate proposal would be that it hasn't been studied in the cost of service analysis. And we don't know how that would, how those costs could be allocated to the different rate classes without additional information. Not saying the council--
Let me ask, let me ask you a question then. Since it's less, since it's less, is there a conflict with Prop. 26? It's less than what is proposed?
On its face, no. Obviously, collecting less than revenue on its, on its face. But again, as Mr. Ochoa pointed out, one of the issues that we have to correct with this rate plan is the, the cross subsidy between commercial and residential. In other words, commercial is subsidizing the residential rate. That was allowed prior to Proposition 26. Our first rate adjustment after Prop. 26, we have to correct that issue. And so any rate plan is going to have to correct that. And, and what I'm trying to say is that we don't know the, the proposal that you suggested, how that, how those costs then will be allocated to the different classes. And I'm not, so I'm not saying we can't do it. I'm just saying we can't do it next week. So that's my, that's my comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I agree with Mr. Quintero in part and I disagree in part. I want to look at the, you know, we've heard so many detailed numbers and percentages today. I want to sort of look at the bigger picture a little bit. And I want to first thank everyone for coming and thank for all, thank all the speakers for offering your thoughts. And a lot of you have put a lot of your feelings into your, into your thoughts and into, into your words. I particularly want to thank Mr. Weber because what he said, I don't know if he's here, but what he said was pretty close to how I feel about this whole thing. I think there's no hiding the, the point that the transfer, the transfer is the cause of why we're having this situation today. Whether it's legal, you know, how it came about, since when it started, I, you know, I'm not here, you know, pointing fingers. It's not what it's all about. What I want is to look at this situation on a more fundamental level and think in the long term, how are we going to deal with this issue? Because what do we have today? We have a proposed plan which in five years will, we're told, solve the problem that we're facing in terms of Glendale Water and Power's infrastructural issues and, you know, its expenses. But what will happen afterwards, I'm not, I'm not clear about that. Because the transfer is there and we, we can't quite determine, you know, what is, when is it okay to transfer and when it's not okay? Again, I don't want to get into the legal aspect of it, but I know this. If an entity can't take care of its own infrastructural needs after it transfers money to another entity, that transfer can't be right. So even for the sake of making the transfers, if they're legal, for the sake of making them sustainable, we need to look at the broader picture. Look at, how can we make this work math-wise? How can we do it? And again, we're told that we'll have a surplus within the end of the five years, you know, and we'll have, we'll have raised our reserves to an acceptable level. But really, I mean, at the end of five years, when we start raising salaries, when we start, you know, giving raises to people that have been waiting for raises, or at least they think they're waiting for raises, are we going to have to increase the transfers? Are we, do we have a systemic solution on, on how to supplement our budget in a way so that we're not constantly depend on this transfer? I don't know that we're doing that. I don't know that we're really taking a deep breath and thinking about how to solve this issue without transferring the, the expense or the cost of the transfer to the, to the taxpayers, to the residents. And again, remember, it's not just this 24 to 30 percent increase of the electricity fee, you know, depending on who you ask. The utility use tax also will increase accordingly. The public benefit charge also will increase accordingly. And all of that is being borne by individual residents. So I'm, I'm very worried about this increase. I, I won't support it. I won't vote for it. I will support a 3 percent increase for a three-year period, maybe a five-year period. I'll have one week to think about that. But I just don't think fundamentally it is fair to ask our residents to pay this much in such a short period of time because people can't sustain that kind of, you know, an increase in their bill. Also, consider the fact that we, we will be hurting our businesses. I mean, promotion of businesses is about the only sustainable way we can, we have to replenish, to, to fund our general budget, to fund our budget. But if we're increasing electricity fees for our businesses, we're, we're, you know, we're increasing their cost of doing business. So are we indirectly driving them out of business or driving them out of Glendale? I'm worried about that. I'm, I'm more worried about that than, you know, whether it's going to be 3 percent or 4 percent or 7 percent this year. So I think we should go slow. We should really look at the more systemic problems that we may be facing and use time wisely to find, you know, better ways to make sure our budget is fully funded without having to rely so much on the transfer. And, and again, I'm in no way suggesting that we should stop transferring next year because that's just not doable. It's not doable. Even if we were to try to sell the utility, which is something we should maybe look into, we should, we should look into everything just to make sure that we have the answers to our questions. Even if we were to try to sell the utility, I don't think that that would happen very fast, nor do I think that that would help us this year or next year. So with that in mind, I will join Mr. Quintero's. What was it, 3 percent? If it's 3 percent for the next five years, I'm okay with it, but nothing more than that.
Freeman, did you want to say anything?
And I understand that the COSA is not, hasn't been done on that kind of a rate. And if we have to do the COSA and then move forward, I guess that's what we have to do.
Freeman, do you want to say anything?
I'm going to make the majority of my comments next week. I do think it's a shame that the democratic process here was sidelined by somebody interrupting the meeting. I think that's, it's not helpful, it's not democratic. I think it's really more about someone showboating than anything else. I will say this, I want to point out that with the 8 percent rate increase that's proposed, with that rate increase, ratepayers will be paying less than they paid in--
2008.
2008? In 2008, less than you paid in 2008. Keep that in mind, the rates have gone down 10 percent in the past several years. 10 percent they've gone down. Now, I run a business. There aren't many businesses that can reduce their costs 10 percent over a number of years while their, sorry, reduce their income by that amount while their costs go up much, much higher than that. And that's why, I mean, just simply, that's why we're in the position that we're in. The utility has lowered rates at the time when its expenses have gone up. People talked about how it's hard to put food on the table because the cost of food increases. That's absolutely right. For a lot of people, it is hard, and I have a lot of sympathy. But there's a reason that those costs have gone up. It's because the cost of food has gone up for the stores that are purchasing them, number one, and number two, they're making a profit. This utility doesn't make a profit, doesn't pocket money. All the money that's takes in are either spent back on the utility or spent directly in the community. We're not a for-profit company, the way that a private utility would be. Now, we may have to sell the utility. If we continue on this track, or I think if we do a 3 percent rate increase, we will sell this utility in a few years. We will be in a place where this utility is bankrupt. We've seen the numbers. It's all well and good to say, I'm only going to support 2 percent or 3 percent. What is that based on? It's not based on anything. We've seen the numbers of what happens if we only increase certain amounts and where we have to go and where we end up. This utility will be bankrupt. If it's sold to Edison or to another company, they're fine companies, but you know what happens to their money? It goes to shareholders. It goes to places other than the community because they're for-profit. We don't have that happening here. Look, we're all in the same boat. We don't, they don't bus us in from out of town. You know, we pay the same rates as everybody else, but our goal is to make sure that our utility can function for the community. Or if we sell it, that, that's in the best interest of the community. And I was listening very closely tonight for solutions, both from the dais and from the community. And unfortunately, I haven't heard alternatives that make our situation any better beyond what the staff has proposed. I haven't heard it. I've heard a lot of people complaining about the rates going up, even though, again, they're back to where they were in 2008, they're actually lower. But still, I know people have gotten used to that reduction. They maybe put the money elsewhere, or maybe they're getting less income now, so it's hard for them. I understand. I mean, that's, that's the tough thing about this vote. But at the same time, we have a responsibility to make sure that the power goes on when you turn the power on. And we can't ensure that happening without putting a certain amount of money into this utility that has to come from ratepayers because it's not coming from anywhere else. That's where the money comes from. Our costs have gone up for many reasons, not the least of which being increasing regulations that come down from the state or the federal government. They tell us we have to buy more expensive power, renewable power, but they don't give us any money for that. We can't not do that. There's a lot of things that we would perhaps just fiscally would not want to have to do, but, you know, we don't have that choice. And our costs go up. We have an aging infrastructure that needs improvement. One of my colleagues talked about businesses and how this will hurt business. I guarantee you, as a business owner, that if you gave businesses the choice of paying more for rates or having unreliable power and being shut down, they would pay the rates. If you ask Disney, what happens to your huge campus if the power goes out, even for a day? That's a huge amount of money and losses for them. And I have a really small business. It's an internet-based business, so if my power goes down and I don't have an internet connection anymore, I'm out of business. And a lot of businesses that way, restaurant, if they're out for a day from no power, that's a lot of money that they lose if they can't keep their freezers running and their ovens running. So, you know, it's a big picture. One of my colleagues said, let's go slow. Getting, going slow is what's left, brought us here because we've gone for three years now looking at this and studying this and not raising rates and actually going backwards. It's really, really easy to vote against a rate increase as a council member. Let me tell you, the easiest thing in the world would be for me to say, I'm not going to vote for an increase or this increase. That would be so easy. People would love me this, I'd be the hero of a lot of people here. But what happens when I'm off council in four years and then the next council walks into a bankrupt utility and looking at much higher rate increases or looking at selling the utility? Would that be a responsible, have been a responsible action of mine? No. The transfer, I think the people who speak against it are either disingenuous or don't understand where that money is going because it's going directly into the community. And you can look, you can see it. You can see our budget every year, the money that comes in and exactly how it's spent. And if that money was to stop, now, keep in mind, we're reducing it $250,000 a year into the foreseeable future. We, that's built into this rate is to reduce that transfer every year and bring it down. But if you eliminated that, you are talking about eliminating your entire library system plus a large section of your parks, police station, police officers, fire departments, that's where that money goes. So is anybody really advocating that we do that, that we close the libraries? Is that really what you're telling us to do? I don't think so. So there's no easy answers. There just isn't. And, you know, you could say it's a shame that we didn't raise the rates during the recession. Other utilities did. Maybe, you know, if we had done that, if we had raised the rates 3 percent a year, it would have hurt people, I think, at the worst time, in the middle of the recession. But we wouldn't be here today looking to raise the rates 8 percent. You would have already done that. You would have already been paying that. So you got the benefit of not having those increases and in fact of having a decrease over the past three years. You had that benefit over the several years. Let's talk about what our other utilities were doing over the same amount of time. Got all this paper here.
They're going to save most of your comments to next week.
No, I, I'm not going to, I won't have to talk again because not my role. Okay. So where is, okay, here we go. So since, from, from 2007 until 2014, assuming the 8 percent rate increase, so from 2007 going into next year, assuming we raise the rates, let's look at what the other utilities have done. Burbank Water and Power in the same amount of time has increased their rates 17 percent. Pasadena has raised their rates 31 percent. LADW has raised their rates 52.1 percent. And assuming we do the rate increase, we'll have raised our rates 12.5 percent, the lowest rate increase in the entire area. I don't think that's irresponsible. So I wish I had heard suggestions that would have made it to where we don't have to raise rates. I really do. I don't want to have to pay higher rates either, but at the same time, I don't want a bankrupt utility. And that's where we're going. And I don't see how you don't increase the rates the way that the staff proposed. I don't see any alternative. They ran the numbers. If you pay less now, you pay more later. It'll be a bigger hit because of the way the money compounds. So that's an alternative, but I don't think it's a good alternative. I don't think it's one that's going to make people happy. So those are my comments. I won't support the lower rate increase.
All right, well, I have a comment too. I am positive and I am confident that this utility will not go bankrupt, period. The idea that you have to do eight, seven, whatever those other numbers for, we go bankrupt, absolutely not. I disagree 100 percent.
I have a comment also. You know, as far as having, in four years, walking into a situation where it's a bankrupt utility, I feel, I feel like I'm in that situation. I walked into a situation where I'm, you know, within three, four months of being on the dais, I'm being asked to, you know, guns being put to my head and I'm being told either increase utility, you know, electricity fees by 24 to 30 percent or the utility's going bankrupt, literally going bankrupt.
I didn't hear that from the staff.
No, no, not from staff.
I haven't heard that.
No, no, I know, but a certain analogy was being made. I'm saying, I feel like that analogy can be made now. Well, that's all I'm saying. So tough choices, tough choices are, you know, looking at systemic problems and thinking how to overcome them. Easy choice sometimes is to say, well, there's money in GWP, let's make a transfer. Let's, let's close the gap. That's an easy choice. I mean, that's the way I see it. And as far as, again, having a, a business having a choice of having the lights go out or paying more for, for its electricity, again, it sounds like you're putting, you know, it's, it's a choice between bad and horrible. Why does it have to be that way? That's, why don't we find an option that's good? That, that's where I'm trying to go with this. But we have what we have.
Well, I guess somebody's going to find out what the future is. We don't have any rate increase or not enough. Will we go bankrupt? Well, we'll find out in a few years. I'll be reading the newspaper from home and, oh, gee, Mr. Quintero was right.
I'll be blaming you, Mr. Weaver.
So we'll find out. I don't know what's going to happen. I do hear one thing, there's at least three colleagues that don't like the rate structure. So, and you can't have a whole new rate structure developed and analyzed.
Three colleagues?
Well.
I introduce the ordinance.
Well, okay, there might be three that like it, two that don't find. But if there's three that don't like the proposal of staff and the Water and Power Commission, then we're going to have to do some kind of new analysis of different combinations of rates. And that's going to take some time. Is that correct, Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. You would, if you're going to deviate from 87522 to a significant degree, meaning more than a percentage point or so, then you'd have to throw out the cost of service analysis and reestablish what your revenue needs are, that 165 million, and reduce that amount and then study that. So, which you can do, but that'll take, it's an expenditure of, of time.
And addition to the percentages, we say, well, we can dip into the reserves and we don't need that much and, you know, there's so many variables.
I have a question. That 165 million that you, that includes bringing the reserves up to 124 million?
114.
I mean, 114 million.
Correct.
Right?
It looks like a month, two months delay if you have to do that because if you say 3, 3, 3 and somebody else says 4, 3, 2, 1, you know, you're going to have a lot of analysis doing and then they're going to say, well, you can dip into the reserve for 20 million or lower it. How many combinations are going to be in this matrix?
The, you, you can study by way of a COSA, any number of things.
Right.
So the, the alternatives are, are plentiful. However, the, the metrics that we applied in, in coming up with the rate plan is to bring GWP as quickly as possible back to net operating positive cash and to begin to read, to course correct as quickly as possible.
And to be able to sell bonds so you can do the major capital improvement projects that we know are coming.
So if you were going to do a brand-new COSA, as Mr. Tocotellain's whispering in my ear, it probably is three, three months to do that as opposed to a month or two. And, and that's not to say that you need to make difference to Mr. Sinanian's point. You don't, it isn't as though we're saying approve this or the, the world will suddenly come to an end. What we're saying is that we have to reestablish what those metrics are. So either you are going to reduce the transfer, in which case you need to find other monies in the general fund, or you're going to reduce the reserve levels, understanding that you build the reserves in the final two years especially of, the final two and a half years of the rate plan. The, the first two years are to establish the ability to sell a revenue bond and to, and to bring GWP back to a positive operating cash position.
But if they don't care to sell bonds, that's another scenario. So there's a matrix sitting here that, that we're going to tangle with next week unless there's three that like the recommendation and vote for it three to two. And I understand, poor Mr. Sinanian, congratulations, welcome to the council. Gets in in April and he's having to deal with this one. I never had to deal with anything like that so quick. Welcome to council. So, you know, we won't know until next week. And then it could be a three-month delay.
If, if the, if the proposed rate plan or something very similar to it is not accepted, then we basically go into hiatus for a period of time and continue to book losses to GWP.
And then we'll come back and we will start all over again.
Like we did last year.
Okay.
Correlated question. If we were to consider lowering the reserve limit that we've set, the city council set previously, would that, how does that happen? Do we need to introduce that?
I said, that's one of the things Water and Power suggested looking at, and we could do that separately to find out if we want to keep that level, lower it, raise it, whatever.
Because I understand that, that's putting some pressure on, on the staff, right?
Yes, sir.
Of having to come up with the numbers.
I would direct you to this particular slide. When you talk about increasing the reserve, replenishing that reserve, you see the critical years are here, year two, year, through year four. Is that 2016? So 14, this current year through 14. The, these, and then it levels off in the final two years. You're building your cash reserve as quickly as you can. So if you were to go a different route, this, this line flattens out and you're pushing this way into this kind of curve.
If you reduce the amount of the reserves, then it doesn't go up as high before it starts to lower.
Or it doesn't go up as high if council decides to change that policy.
That's a study onto its own, of its own. So if we don't like the plan that's presented, there's not three votes to do that, then we can direct staff to go back and do any number of things.
So I guess for me, the question is, the reserves are now at 47 million and we're attempting to get it to 114.
Well, 24.
Well, ultimately, isn't it 124 million?
That's the, that's the policy adopted by council.
So we're attempting to get it to 124 million. So I guess I'm questioning whether we need to jump from 47 million to 124 million.
I guess from my standpoint, as an engineer, if we have a major earthquake and Grayson Power Plant goes down, or we have major disrupt, disruption on our heater system, transmission lines, who knows where, how many multimillion dollars are we going to have to spend immediately to bring it up online? I don't know.
Well, and that's true of the city hall and the parking structure and the rest of our municipal buildings. What do we have in reserve for that?
And that could happen tomorrow.
Well, general fund reserves are about 60 million as of last year.
Well, general fund reserves are about 60 million as of last year. One other comment, just for consideration, and as you look at those different lines moving up the chart, you have to take everything into account, and one of the issues is, built into this plan, is the issuance of a $60 million bond so we can do those critical infrastructure. It would be doubtful whether we could issue bonds. We may, but the cost would certainly be higher because we become a riskier investment to bondholders. And that green line at the bottom is the net income as it climbs back up into the positive. In the lesser plans, and we've run different scenarios, that either flattens out or stays negative. You will not be able to issue debt if you are showing a negative or a loss, negative net income, a loss for a long duration of time. We've already had two years of loss. We've budgeted for a $20 million loss this year, hoping that a rate increase was showing a projected loss for the year after this, even with the rate increase. So all these things are, you know, it's, you know, not just one thing versus the other. It's, you have to take this all into consideration.
They're tied together.
All tied together. We've tried to portray that. This is the plan as we move forward with the sequential rate increases.
That's why I talk about a whole matrix, depending on where we go next week. So let's let it go at this point. We'll come back, Mr. City Attorney, we come back next week, Mr. Najarian introduces the ordinance, and then we can haggle on to that, see if there's votes for it. If not, I guess that'd be the first step. Take a vote and find out if the ordinance is introduced, passes, then it's over.
And then we also have the resolution that goes along with that, has to be adopted separately.
Yeah, and if not, then it opens up a whole new ballgame to find out what direction we want to give staff to do over the next three months or so.
That's correct.
Might we also suggest that in the ordinance as introduced by Mr. Najarian, the city attorney ensures that the language is placed with respect to the adjustment charges, that the council retains discretion over whether or not to apply the formulas for those various adjustment charges. Thus, in decoupling, if the council chooses to rely on reserves such as they are rather than do the decoupling charge, that is a discretionary decision by council as opposed to an automatic formula.
You want that in what?
We just want to make sure that that's in the ordinance.
Right. So I'd ask Mr. Najarian, who introduced the ordinance, to ask that that be brought back with the introduced ordinance, and then the council can discuss and debate it next week.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll do that in my.
Okay, it's been introduced.
Procedural question. So Mr. Quintero's version of the ordinance won't even be considered next week because the COSA analysis hasn't been done on it?
Well, if 87522 is not approved, as the mayor indicated, then we would move to other alternatives. We would hope that if the proposed rate plan is not approved, that council gives us very clear direction with respect to which plan would be palatable and in articulating that, providing for us the metrics by which you would want us to evaluate plans. For example, not getting to the higher reserves, issuing or not issuing debt, the various tests that you see built along the right side of the slide.
In addition to that, from the engineering staff, I'd like to have some analysis on the 60 million, and we're talking about a bond to get it done as quickly as possible. I'd like to have some analysis from the staff in terms of what is most important. I mean, it varies from this $20 million substation, I believe is basically for future, the Grandview Substation, $20 million, it'll take approximately two years. That's for future development on the Disney property. We're basically doing that for future development there. Do we know exactly what they're going to be building in the next two years? Maybe Grayson is much more important, the 20 million for the Grayson. So I'd like to have some hierarchy in terms of the importance. I assume the Department of Energy, the 10 million we have to work with to meet their needs, maybe we can't put that off, or maybe we can't. But I'd like to have some alternative to the 60 million bond.
Mr. Quintero, I'm sure we would address all that if the measure doesn't pass. That's just part of the new study that will have to occur. So I think we've exhausted ourselves on this item. So that is done.
By my, Mr. Mayor, just one more point. With respect to additional public comment, again, as I indicated earlier, and I just want to clarify a little bit, all the discussion's been had, all the analysis and reports that are part of the record. So you're within your discretion to not have additional speakers as long as one or two things doesn't happen. If there are any substantial revisions or if there are any changes to the ordinance going forward, then I think you have to allow public comment on that particular, and if there's any new information that we bring forward that's substantially new compared to what we've brought before.
I heard somebody had 60s, petition with 60 names on it.
600.
And that could just be submitted as part of the record, but I'm saying if the city
Going to make sure it was submitted because we didn't see it.
So when you say the ordinance, you're referring to the 87522?
No, that's actually in the resolution. What's in the ordinance is, it's making some changes to the code, and it's also setting what the different adjustable charges are, but then it defers for the council to adopt the actual rate plan, the 87522 or whatever the council ultimately adopts, to do that by resolution. So they'll be together next week, the ordinance and the resolution. The council can always adopt the ordinance with what the, you know, what the adjustable charges are and then differentiate on the resolution. But again, as I explained to your question earlier, procedurally, the proposal that Councilmember Quintero made, we don't have enough analysis to say whether or not the COSA supports that. So we couldn't, that's not something the council could legally do next week.
But that also means that people can't come and express their support for Councilman Quintero's proposed resolution?
You wouldn't be taking action on Councilman Quintero's proposal that it couldn't be presented because it doesn't have the analysis behind it.
That's correct.
Three months or more. Okay.
And again, that's all subject to, obviously, the mayor and the council's prerogative as far as what to allow as part of the record.
First thing we'll do is if there are any more discussion on the ordinance that's been introduced, vote on that ordinance and find out where we're at. And I hope the staff report for this coming week clearly lays it out so everybody understands what we're doing.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's move on. What is next, please? Oral communication?
Oral communications. At item six, our oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Counsel may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Happy National Night Out. Fortunately, it's over.
Happy National Midnight Out.
Yeah. Okay, I have one speaker, Charles Hooker. I think he got tired. Okay, we're done with oral communication. Anything else? New business? Now, your motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Stand adjourned at 9:20.